This workshop meeting of the Board of, of this Core ISD Board of Trustees will come to order, please. The date is Monday, May 19th, 2025. The time is 5:33. And we do have a quorum. Ms. Goddard will not be joining us as she was feeling ill today. Although we can't see the flag, it is right behind the large. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Over to the left. So everybody, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Yes. Let me go ahead and read the reminder. Thank you for joining us for this meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated in multiple languages. Gracias por acompañarnos en esta reunión tanto en persona como en línea a través de nuestra transmisión de YouTube. La grabación completa de la reunión estará disponible en YouTube y se archiverá a través del sitio web de la junta, donde los espectadores tienen la opción de ver la reunión con subtítulos traducidos a varios idiomas. All right. We don't have any speakers signed up for public comments, so we'll continue right to the board workshop. Leading us will be Mr. Ben Mackey.
Thank you, but before we begin, I'm gonna kick it over to Dr. Inajosa to give us a few words and then we'll get started.
First of all, to the new board members, congratulations, welcome, I think. This is gonna be like from the school of hard knocks and baptism by fire. I tell all the time, I've been working with boards for 27, 29 years, and you have three main jobs. Policy, the budget, and hiring the superintendent. You get the two, two of those out here in your first couple of months on the job. And so, but it is, it is great. It's democracy in action, but now we can have a full board representing your communities that did not have a voice here. And this, this is a great school district. My kids went to school here, my wife was a teacher here, and in the 90s when I first became a superintendent. But you have a lot of hard and important work ahead of you. And it's gonna be like drinking out of the fire hose, water out of a fire hose. And we're starting with this. This is a, the state has a lot of requirements, and this is one of the requirements of the state, that you have this team, team building opportunity. And then you also gonna hear from the search consultant about the status and the timeline, and all of that's gonna happen real fast. And so I just wanna thank you for your service, congratulations, I'm not gonna belabor the point. I'll be here most of the time. I may chime in a couple of times, and you know, I have a short attention span, so I may go join the team over there somewhere. But thank you, congratulations, I'll turn it back to Mr. Mackey.
Yeah. Good evening, y'all. Congratulations to the board members who just won their election. Excited to have you on this, this team of eight, and that's exactly what this is. This team is the most important relationship that is in this district. From this team, everything else flows. What happens here echoes across all of your schools, all of your buildings, and all across your community. And so getting this work right is really the most important work that we can do. So I'm thrilled to be here with you all today. Just a quick note for those of you who don't know me, Ben Mackey, I've been an educator for all of my life. I was a teacher, high school principal, assistant superintendent. And then I've also served on the board, been on the board of Dallas ISD for the last six years. So I've gotten to see this type of work in action from both sides, being on the administrative side as well as the board side. And I'm honored to join you all as the Lone Star Governance Coach. But really in that role, my goal is just to help you all have the conversations that are meaningful and important, so you all can get it right for your community here. Nobody knows your community like you do, and it's just our job to help you all facilitate and continue to bring greatness out of this. So thrilled to be here with you. We all got a packed agenda on all of this. And we believe firmly that the best way to team build is not through ropes courses, not through any of that, no problem there, though. It's through doing the hard, meaningful work that y'all signed up for, and that's what we're gonna do here tonight. So with that, before we hop in, I'm gonna ask you all to reflect. You have some papers in front of you, we'll get to the papers later, but does everyone have a pen? Everyone's prepared, it's like we're in a school building or something. So I'm gonna ask you to reflect on this question first and take a few minutes, jot down some things. After your time in leadership with your school system has ended, what difference do you want to have made in the lives of students? 10 words, no more, no more than 10 words. Go ahead and take some time and reflect and write that down. We will ask you to share. 10 words or less. I see people counting, that's good. Adding a bunch of hyphens. Give you about another 30 seconds to finish up. All right, after your time in leadership with your school system has ended, what impact would you have liked to make in the lives of students? Who will be the first to share? All right, Mr. Smith.
I want the students to have gained skills that will stay with them for a lifetime.
Yeah, I want students to have gained skills to stay with them for the lifetime, thank you. Who will be next? Maribel.
Collaboratively build systems, structures, and procedures for student success that lasts for a lifetime.
All right, collaboratively build systems, procedures, and structures that last for a lifetime?
For student success.
For student success, sorry, I was combining these two.
I know, because I cheated.
Thank you, who will be the next?
That students are well-prepared to productively join our community, and that we've established systems to ensure that continues to the future.
Wow, we really are going over those 10 words real fast.
That was only 10 words, one of them was like supercalifragilisticexpialidocious.
So to prepare students to join our community.
Productive.
Productive citizens to join our community. Thank you.
Provide students with opportunities to have successful and productive futures.
All right, provide students the opportunities to have productive and successful futures, thank you.
Like to be well-rounded individuals.
Yeah. Be less than 10 words, you gave some of your words to President Nahara, huh? Thank you, well-rounded, well-rounded individuals, thank you.
Enable in an environment that sets our future leaders up for success.
Yeah, enable an environment that sets our future leaders up for success, thank you.
Provide the tools needed to have a good shot at life.
Yeah, I wanna give my students the tools needed to have a good shot at life. Thank y'all for engaging in that, and I wanna ground there because everything we talk about, well, we're gonna talk about a whole lot of other functional things. At the end of this, if that's the impact you wanna make, it all needs to come back to there, getting students ready to live out what your hopes are for them. So then, one more question that I'm gonna ask you to take a few minutes and just kind of jot your own thoughts around. Why do school systems exist? Go ahead and take a few minutes, write down, why do school systems exist? We invest a lot of time, effort, and energy and money into school systems. Why do they exist? Take some time and jot down your thoughts. Why do school systems exist? Give you about 30 more seconds to finish up. All right, who will be the first to share? Why do school systems exist? Let's start here, Mr. Nahara.
Well, systems exist in general.
School systems.
Well, yes, but I need to start with systems. So systems exist to ensure that desired objectives are achieved. So school systems, we have to ensure equal access to what the community has defined as at least minimum education.
All right, systems exist to create outcomes, and in this aspect, we need to make sure we meet the lowest bar of what education is expected by our community, at least. Thank you. Why do school systems exist? Who will be next? Jesse Smith.
To prepare students for their future with a quality education.
All right, to prepare students for the future with a quality education. Why do school systems exist? Jesse Woodcraft.
To educate, equip, and empower the next generation to change their world.
Educate, equip, and empower the next generation to change their world. Thank you. Jesse Rodriguez.
School systems are a part of a much greater goal, to preserve and expand social structures across communities, and to build the leaders of tomorrow to provide for a sustainable future.
All right, so it's part of a larger set of social structures, but our individual need is to prepare the leaders of tomorrow. Did I hear you correctly?
Across industries.
Across industry, thank you. Jesse Macias.
School systems exist to build our future leaders. Investing in public school systems is an investment in our future.
Yeah, investing in public school systems is an investment in our future, it's building future leaders. Thank you.
To provide children the educational opportunities to contribute to the economic prosperity of the community.
Yeah, provide students the opportunities to contribute to the economic prosperity of the community, thank you. Jesse Guerra.
We need to educate them and for them to be successful, to be able to adapt in life skills.
Yeah, educate students to be successful and be able to adapt with life skills. What was the commonality between all of those responses? Any thoughts? There was something I heard in all of those responses.
Looking towards the future.
Looking towards the future, yep.
Students in education.
Students, for sure. Yeah. This is about students. School systems exist to help students, prepare them with the skills, the knowledge, and the mindsets to be successful in the future. You can slice it a million different ways, but that's where it's at. Why did nobody say school systems exist to balance the budget? Why not?
That's not why school systems exist.
Yeah, is it important?
Sure.
Heck, yeah, it's important, some would say it's necessary to do so, but that's not why they exist. We would design schools very different if the only goal was to balance the budget. Why is the purpose of school systems, why don't school systems exist solely for student safety? That's an important thing, right? Why don't they exist for student safety?
I think. Not the only thing.
Yeah, if we only designed school systems for student safety, school systems would look very different. We're, we're designing systems to educate students so they can go off and be future leaders. And that's what we're gonna keep grounding back to today. Actually, as we move through all of these different agendas, we're gonna keep coming back to that lens. So I'm gonna invite you to keep that with you as we go forward. So one more question, and this time I'm gonna let you all talk with your table. So we're gonna have this table talk, this table talk, and this table talk. And y'all just talk to one another. There's a few research-backed actions and behaviors that school boards do that really correlate with student outcomes and improving those outcomes, making sure students can learn for the future. Talk with your partner or partners. Which of these board behaviors are most correlated with improving student outcomes, however you define outcomes? Go ahead, take some time. All right, as you finish up, I'm gonna take some responses. It seems like my groups of two moved a little quicker. This is kinda like Family Feud. There are three responses on the board, three board behaviors that most correlate with student outcomes. Who, which table wants to give one of those?
I wanted to give two.
You can give one first.
Establishing student outcome-based goals.
Okay, establishing student outcome-based goals. Another table, give me another one. Who's got another key board behavior aligned with student outcomes?
Go ahead.
I'll throw one, you guys, you guys argue, we'll throw one. So we came up with three, but the first one that was presented was active collaboration.
Active collaboration, okay. Go over here.
What we discussed was doing a listening tour so that we could create a mission, vision, and core beliefs that are specific to Socor ISD.
Hey, listening tour, thank you. All right, we'll come back for your second one, and then we'll do one more round.
Frequent and consistent measurement of progress towards those student outcome goals.
All right, consistent measurement, progress towards those goals, all right? You guys got another one?
I'm gonna cheat and combine two to one, so we're gonna get both of these in here. Compromise with decorum.
Compromise with decorum, all right. And then, y'all got another one?
We discussed HB3.
Okay.
Which are the student outcome goals and truly reviewing them, revising them on a consistent basis with public, you know, during public meetings.
All right, reviewing and revising goals on a consistent basis. All of the things you named are absolutely important. Some of those things come down to actions, things we do. Others come down to how we do them, and they're definitely important as well. But the three that far and away, regardless if it's a school board, this is turned very much towards the school board because this is about student outcomes, but it doesn't matter. Whatever board you look at, nonprofit, for-profit, three things matter. Number one, you've gotta set the goals. In this case, it means student outcome goals, because as everyone said, why do school systems exist? They exist for students. We need to set goals about what we want for our students. And I'm not here to tell you what those should be, only you and your community know. So number one is setting those goals. The board owns this in collaboration with the superintendent. And it should be grounded in the community's vision. What do you want for your kids at Socor ISD? The second one is around establishing limitations. We're gonna hire a superintendent and say, superintendent, achieve these goals for our kids and our community, but not at the expense of these other things that our community holds dear. So you wanna tell them where to go, and you wanna tell them to not violate things that y'all hold dear at Socor ISD. And then finally, which multiple groups kind of touched on here, is if we got goals, we gotta monitor them. We gotta know if we're on track or not. And whether you take this to a school board, a for-profit board, a corporate board, set goals, establish values, and then monitor if you're making progress. At the end of the day, all of the other stuff is important. You're gonna consider tons of items, all kinds of things, but at the end of the day, focus on these three things really creates clarity for a school system to really move forward. Let me pause there and just see if there's any questions, thoughts, or reactions on that before we kind of move forward. Y'all did good, you guys got a lot of the, a lot of those. So the last part of this section, we do wanna dive into roles and responsibilities. This is a team, a team of eight with distinct roles. We have seven board members, and we got one superintendent that are part of this team of eight. And to be able to distinguish between the different roles, what's a superintendent's job versus what's a board's job is very important. Why is it critical to understand and distinguish the difference between a superintendent's role and the board's role? Who will be the first?
I would say that in my conversations with Mr. Vazquez recently, one of the first things that I told him is I wanna be very careful in terms of not overstepping my authority, and that's very important for us to understand that.
Yeah, thank you for that, why is that important?
Well, I mean, you, there's rules in place, and number one, you don't wanna be in violation of the law. And you don't wanna end up in a circumstance where, you know, you're facing severe consequences for overstepping your authority. That it's not a good image for the district, and, you know, as a trustee, that's not a good image for the folks that you represent.
Yeah, there's definitely laws, there's rules, there's regulations about what we should and shouldn't do. But I'll open up to the wider group, why are there those laws? Why is it just a good thing for an organization to distinguish between these two roles?
Checks and balances?
Checks and balances, tell me a little more.
So that that way the power is kinda like separated, not everyone has all of it, it's kind of controlled, monitored.
Yeah, there's definitely an element of this. We wanna make sure that we're having a dialogue and a conversation, that there's some checks and balances, something the board owns, something the administration owns, absolutely. Why else, why else do we need to distinguish these roles?
Alleviating confusion.
Ah, tell me more.
Staff, administrators, teachers, students.
Yeah, tell me more, what might that look like?
Well, it, rough analogy, but it's like the mom versus dad situation, right? Where if somebody wants something, well, I'm gonna go to mom for this and dad for that, because if I can play them off of each other, I can get what I want. And it may not be the best thing, but in the moment, that's what they want, so they'll play the personalities where they can get it.
Yeah, absolutely. It just, it eliminates confusion in a lot of these things. If you've got, because the organization and the community looks at this group and says, those are the leaders of our district. And if we're not clear about the roles and who owns what, who do I listen to? And oftentimes, I might listen to the one for no bad reason. I might listen to the one who I happen to agree with at that moment, and that could change, it could be that situation. Thank you, why else, why is it important to distinguish roles?
Well, analogy works simple for me, so a captain only has one ship, a ship only has one captain. If there was this team of eight leading the district, instead of just exclusively the superintendent who is the captain, then, just as you said, it's possible, going back to the analogy, the ship would go nowhere.
Yeah.
Because we could all be just constantly turning in different directions just based on either, you know, the information that we have available, just maybe previous experiences, individual professional expertise. And so, you know, that's why there's only one organizational leader, and the board should focus on governance.
Yeah, so if you've got a bunch of people kind of trying to steer the ship the same way, we're all fighting over the steering wheel, and who knows where that ship's gonna end up? If we wanna actually sail, someone's gotta, each person has to have to If we want to actually sail, someone's got to, each person has to have their own role. Someone's got to work the mast, someone's got to be on the rudder, someone's got to be steering, all of that. Thank you for that analogy. Any other thoughts? Why do we have to distinguish? This is superintendent, I'll put you on the spot, you're the lone superintendent up here. Why is it important to distinguish?
And I think it was said appropriately earlier, just to, we all have our lanes, so those lanes don't cross, and we all understand what our roles are, what our authority is, where our authority is not, and making sure there's no overlap in those.
Yeah. It's like any team sport. In any team sport, you focus on spacing, on different jobs, on different roles. We take it for granted in that aspect. You don't see the most effective soccer game watching pre-K soccer, even though it's very fun. There's not a lot of spacing going on, it's just a ball of people, and that's what we're trying to avoid at this table. And the more we do this, the faster we can go, the better we can play. So now let's talk about some of these, and this will be, this will kind of conclude our discussion on roles and responsibilities, but especially since we got some new trustees here, we want to make sure to touch on these. We're gonna do a series of table talks. So we're gonna start with one, we'll let you all talk, we'll come back, we'll share a little bit, and we'll kind of overview it. So there are six key functions of the sport. I know Dr. Nohosa said, there's three main jobs, there's three things you do. You pass policy, you pass a budget, you hire a superintendent. But there's a lot of other work that gets in. Those are the things you actually are gonna pass and really do. But there's a lot of these other things, it's how you do this and how you operate makes a difference. So the first one is just general, primary function. What is, if you had to say it in one sentence, talk to your partners, what's the primary role of the superintendent? And what's the primary role of the board? Go ahead and take a few minutes, chat with your partners.
The primary function, what I feel for the board was that way, you know, and then superintendent is the door, so what is it? She's seat. Yeah. Are we supposed to or no? Are we just the first?
Wait, just talk. I mean, you can talk, we can come to them all.
Start at the first one.
Good.
That individually, right?
Yes. All right, let's bring it back together. Who will be the first to share? What's the primary role of the board? Let's give me an idea.
Governance.
Governance, what does that mean?
Means to adopt policy that gives the superintendent guidance on how to operate the district, make sure that it aligns with the community values.
All right, governance, adopt policy that kind of show how to operate the district in alignment with the community. Any other thoughts on what the board's role is? Pretty good. What about superintendent's role? What's their role?
I think we came up with to lead and manage the execution of the day-to-day operations of the district.
Yeah, dead on. So number one, the board establishes the vision and values. They understand what's happening in the community. All of the board members, y'all come from the community, you know this community. That's why it's your job to establish the vision and values based on what you know from the community, and then monitor at a high level. Superintendent's role is to manage, to take what you have set and make it happen on the ground. That's a key distinction here. Governance is around oversight, management is about doing. Board doesn't do a lot of doing, they do a lot of oversight. Administration does a lot of doing, that's why we pay the salaries, that's why we bring people in, and they work every single day, whereas we, board members in Texas, we work not every single day for no money. That's okay. All right, next one, go ahead and talk to your folks. What's each of these groups' role in the vision and values of the community? Mentioned that. What's the board's role? What's the superintendent's role? The vision and mission, sorry.
But I was putting this list out, vision, mission, and values. Implement them at a high level. I liked what you said. So knowing. What are. And then the implementing is a high level. Implement at the granular level. The door kind of piece of it.
I like it. It's a boring race.
Perfect. Really? You went to Socorro?
No, no, Socorro District. I attended my race.
All right. We'll come back together. On the vision and mission, what's the board's role? What's the superintendent's role? Who would like to share?
For the vision, mission, values, we put, as far as the board, establish and implement at a high level. And then for superintendent, implement at the granular level.
Okay, board is implement at a high level, superintendent is implement at a granular level. Any other thoughts? Any other discussion?
I had shared for the board, setting the vision while also conducting oversight, and for the superintendent, you know, executing that vision.
So the board, not only setting, but also oversight. Absolutely. Anything else? Sir?
I think it's important to mention that the board establishes or defines the vision and the mission, ensuring alignment with the community.
Yeah.
Because they can be different from one district to the next.
Yeah, absolutely. While there's a lot of laws that kind of govern school districts in the same way, no community is the same. Every community has its different focuses, and we're gonna get to that later when we look at what your community said shortly. So this is actually essentially the same for both vision and values. So the board, they codify the mission and the vision, and then they define it. What does it actually look like? The clearer, the better. If it's not clear, then there's a lot of room for interpretation, a lot of room for disagreement. The clearer, the better. And then the superintendent actually then establishes the plan and carries it out. Board sets it, gives oversight, superintendent and their team carry it out. Same thing with the values. The vision is what we're trying to accomplish, the values are what we got to adhere to. The board must also establish those things. What's important at Socorro ISD that we cannot sacrifice as we pursue that? We got to be clear about that. And then it's Mr. Vasquez or any superintendent's job to carry out and try to achieve the mission while not sacrificing those values. All right, next one. Progress monitoring, monitoring progress. What's the board's role? What's the superintendent's role? Take another 30 seconds, talk to your partners.
Yep. And that's what I was thinking for the. Like for the superintendent. They should come up with a plan adjustment, and then of course on our side. Based on what we hear from the community. When we're monitoring, because they might. And then we might be doing. Know what we're listening to? Because people might be. And that might. Never in a critical way to share, but hey, before I have you. Okay, so how do we? I like to.
All right. Progress monitoring. What's the board's role in progress monitoring? What's the superintendent and administration's role?
We'll set the goal.
Yep.
Superintendent's job, he reaches those goals.
Mm-hmm. Yep, board sets the goals, superintendent's job to reach them. What else?
Superintendent reports back based on the progress.
Yeah, superintendent's got to report back on the progress. Otherwise, without that, board doesn't know which direction we're going. What else?
We also discussed not only overall target, but incremental targets.
Yeah, it's one thing to say, we want to make sure all our kids can read. It's another thing to say, all right, what's feasible? What are we gonna accomplish this year? What are we gonna accomplish next year? And so on and so forth. These incremental targets.
And the superintendent is measurement, reporting, and then readjustment if necessary.
Mm-hmm. Superintendent readjusts, reports on everything, exactly. The big idea here is the board has to own this in terms of regularly progress monitoring. It is expected the board to say, all right, we're gonna monitor. We're gonna spend time at each meeting, every other meeting, however, monitoring how we're actually doing to our goals, and asking good questions, doing the homework in advance to kind of understand that. It's up to the superintendent, though, to align all of the work to achieving those. If the board says, we want to make sure our third writers can read, that he's got to work with the entire team over here, set those up, and actually actualize it and come back and bring it back to us. Let's do the last two, and then we'll have a little bit of an open discussion here. So with your partner, both system alignment, so how does the school system organize the alignment of the system? What's the board's role? What's the superintendent's role? And then community engagement. What's the board's role in community engagement versus what's superintendent's role? Go ahead. Enjoy with your partner.
For the system.
Whatever we're doing.
Once we get the data. What is it that, what is the system? And then same thing kind of on the board's side. Information, how can we possibly allocate certain. You know, it's important for our students to read by their own resources, do they need to ensure. And if there's only one mighty penny. And. That's what I was thinking for system alignment. Pretty much support, based on the data, what's necessary. And on the community engagement. You have to be out there. I, like I said.
And that's.
In my opinion.
I like them. And then the superintendent.
Also, doing more of the reporting. The teaching based on. What I hear is. So that's what I was thinking on the superintendent's.
Yeah, because I've heard.
And I always think of my mom, because she takes care of my brother's little ones. They say que lo haga con la. You know. You know, she gets all upset. They have to remind him. You know, my mom is truly. And she's there for the kids, but if you tell her to do anything.
Community meetings, that's all.
She finally has space, you know, the things she wants, she knows.
All right, go ahead and finish up. Here's some good discussion on that. System alignment and/or community engagement. What's the board's role? What's the superintendent's role? Who would like to share?
On the system alignment, what we discussed is, you know, as we get the information for progress monitoring, as far as in the system's place, then putting the resources and, you know, providing the resources based on what our mission, vision, so aligning all of the systems based on the actions that we take.
Yeah, aligning, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Not doing.
So aligning our systems, our budget, putting resources behind it as we get information that we've learned from the superintendent. Did I hear correctly? All right. What else?
For system alignment, for the board was to ensure that the superintendent's evaluation aligns with the other categories, and that the budget being adopted also aligns with what we've said coming to this particular one. That it demonstrates that those priorities are priorities and that they're being funded.
Yeah, the board has a couple legal things that it can never get rid of. It's got to do the superintendent evaluation, it's got to adopt a budget. How do we make sure those are aligning to what we're trying to accomplish? Thank you.
Once we set those alignments, we can't stir off and go to different paths. We have to make sure that we're following those alignments.
Yeah, what?
Superintendent's, that's where it gets evaluated.
Yeah, what happens if we change our alignment too much? What happens if we've got one focus here and then later on, six months later, we switch to something else?
There's a lot of instability.
Yeah, what does that result in?
You know, a lot of turbulence, you know, and kind of chaos.
Yeah. It trickles down. If we're just changing our focus, it's really hard to see the outcomes of the work we're doing. A lot of the things we do in education aren't overnight fixes, they're long-term things, so thank you for that. Anything else? What about community engagement? What's the board's role? What's the superintendent's role?
We are the voice of the community as board members.
Absolutely. You were elected to be the voice of your community as board members. Not just for the area you represent, but for all. And I think this is a big important point. Why are we called trustees and not representatives?
Because the community entrusts us, the, that's kind of just like using the word to define itself, huh?
Well, it's true, though. We're entrusted with what?
Your voice?
With the resources, maybe.
Voice, resources.
To make decisions based on the needs of the community.
Yeah, we're entrusted to make decisions in the best interest of the students that we serve specifically. And it's sometimes hard as a board member, especially as a board member that just got elected. God bless everyone in the elections. But it's hard to turn around to people and say, my job is actually not to represent you who voted for me. You obviously hear from them, but that's not the job. The job is to look out for the students of Socorro ISD, which is what you all will do here. So thank you for sharing that. What else? What's the difference between board and superintendent in terms of community engagement?
I think it comes down to what type of community engagement it is.
Tell me more.
And so we were talking a little bit, if we're gonna do, you know, the community forums or the community listening meetings, I think that's an aspect where the trustees need to be first and foremost upfront. And funny enough, I laughed with Mr. Garrett, because I literally just sent my email up today, and I already have a parent complaint. And that's one of those things that you have to turn it over to the superintendent and the staff, because from that aspect, we shouldn't be that involved.
Yeah.
And so I can listen, and I can empathize, but when it comes to taking action, it's, have you talked to? I would really like to point you there first.
Yeah.
And so it just kind of depends on what community engagement we're talking about.
Yeah, thank you for teasing us out. So real quick to summarize this. So number one, system alignment is exactly what we talked about. How do the systems we own incentivize us to achieve the goals? Superintendent evaluation, budget, policy. And then the superintendent needs to figure out that whole thing for the rest of the system. How do we align incentives? How do I organize my department? How do we organize schools to achieve that? And then to the community engagement is exactly what you were just saying, Trustee Woodcraft specifically. It is what type of engagement? The board needs to maintain this communication. You can't be expected to be a board member or trustee and not have community engagement, but it's about what? You are the owner focus. The people who pay the tax dollars to Socorro ISD to educate our students, I need to be able to understand what the community's vision and values are so I can set it, make sure that we're making decisions in alignment to that. But the superintendent is customer-focused. They've got a service for their students. Their students need to learn, parents need to enjoy that, parents need to get what they're wanting out of it, et cetera. And they need to make sure that we are actually engaging community to understand how the customers, quote unquote, the parents, the students, the community who are taking care of our services, are actually experiencing that. Both have a very critical role in community engagement. It's just a very different role. And to the example you just gave, you know, if a parent has a concern about a school, am I as a board member able to really solve that concern? Why not?
It's not our job.
It's not our job, but also, which is functionally, why can't I solve it?
We don't really have the authority to solve anything.
You don't have the resources either.
They don't have the authority, resources, and in my case, sometimes, I don't know the specifics of the school or why that problem is in there, and if I get involved, now I'm just confusing the situation. But if I can get that parent to the person who can, you better believe the teacher, the principal, the assistant superintendent, whomever, can find a solution probably faster than I can. Thank you all for engaging in that. Any thoughts or reactions to the board roles and responsibilities here versus the superintendent roles and responsibilities?
I think it really, I mean, for an easy summarization, it comes down to three things on each side. With every one of these focus areas, you need task, condition, purpose.
Yeah.
And so what are we doing? Why are we doing it? How are we getting there? And I think the more that we can define that for each functional area, the easier it is to see where we're going and how to get there.
Yeah, exactly. The clearer we have these lines, the faster we can row together. When we know which direction we're going, when we know what our jobs are, we know how to use the ORE, we can now move, and we can move a lot faster than if we're all just trying to operate in our own lanes. Thank you for that. Any other thoughts, reactions, questions? All right, so we'll finish this segment up with one last reflection. So based on thinking back to your 10 words, or 10 words or more that you wrote, what you want to achieve, what would be the next step? So we got a board here, you've already identified what you're trying to achieve. What are some of the next steps that you in your mind are thinking right now, like, "I wish, I want to do this next", in terms of really getting on the same page about the priorities we're trying to achieve, setting these roles and responsibilities? No right or wrong answers, I'm just curious to hear what people's thoughts are. So take a few minutes, jot down some answers, then we'll come back and discuss it together. You want to make that difference, that you said, what comes next? What's the next step? All right, who will be the first to share? What are the steps that you're thinking about right now about what comes next? Trustee Woodcraft.
I made this one shorter, because I made the last one longer. Two words for you, building relationships.
Building relationships, yep. What else?
Documenting the goals and non-negotiables.
Yeah, documenting the goals and non-negotiables, yep. Trustee Rodriguez.
I have, I put three items down, ensuring efficiency, establishing excellence, and making SISD a pillar of the greater El Paso community, but I was, as I was writing that, also recognizing that SISD is already a pillar of the greater El Paso community, but making sure that folks don't question it.
Yeah, how do we make sure that folks don't question that we are a pillar of the greater El Paso community and really achieving efficiencies and excellence? Thank you.
Building trust.
Building trust.
I guess maybe I misunderstood the question, but I took it as, after I finish as a board member, I want our students to continue, after we finish educating them for 12 years, to continue the education, whether it's in college or a trade.
Yeah. So, and in that vein, if I want them to do that, what do we as a system need to do to, are you hoping that we can do here to make sure that happens?
I guess, I mean, we're doing everything that we can. I mean, we're at early colleges, but we have to make sure we, I guess, close that gap and get them more involved.
Yeah, how do we close this gap? How do we make sure we keep an attention there and make sure that they have the resources they need, whether early college or otherwise, to get there?
Establish, once the board has established the district's goals, then it would be the superintendent's responsibility to align resources to ensure that these goals are met.
Yeah, superintendent's already tactical. You all set the goals, and then I'm ready to roll and set and align the resources. Anything else? No? All right, well, then we're going to get to that hard work. Specifically, we're going to talk about community listening, and just as we go, there's four more sections of today. Today, we wanted to start with roles and responsibilities. Now, we're actually going to get to dig into Socorro ISD. We're going to talk about the community listening, because this board did substantial community listening over the March and April timeframe. We're going to talk about the administration, so the administration also did a deep dive into all of the data, looked at this and actually saw some of these areas, and is going to share their findings from that. We're going to talk about next steps as it relates to setting those priorities, and then the superintendent search, this board is going to come together and find a full-time superintendent to continue on the work that Socorro ISD is trying to achieve. If you need to get up or step out, go to the restroom, please feel free. We're going to keep going for the sake of the discussion, and I'm also going to start switching you all up. So you all get to get with your table partners here, but I want to make sure you have a chance to engage with everybody as we do this work. So before we jump in, the community listening summary. I want to kind of, some of this will be old to those of you who have been a trustee for a little bit. For our newer ones, I wanted to make sure we ground in the same language. And the way that we really think about this work, cascading it down, we start with the vision and values. That's what the school board is elected for, to represent the community's vision and values here. And the way that I like to think about that, and I think it makes the most sense, these two things are different. If you think about it in terms of what you're telling the superintendent when you're clear about the vision and values. The vision is superintendent, "We want you to accomplish this," and you're going to be as specific as possible around that. And the values are, while you accomplish that, don't sacrifice these things that matter. And those are the two things. What happens if a board isn't clear? They say, "Superintendent, make sure our kids learn." What's the trouble in that? What do you all think?
Nothing quantifiable to measure against.
Yeah, so what does that lead to?
Confusion and malarkey.
Yeah, confusion. Superintendent might say, I can almost guarantee you, the superintendent will say, "We achieved that, students learned," and the question is, does everyone else agree and have the same thought? It's not to say someone's right or wrong, it's just we haven't been clear. What else happens if we're vague about goals?
No clear direction?
Yeah, and specifically, you know, that could result in, you know, superintendent focuses on the STAR test, when instead, actually, what I meant was the non-STAR test, some other nationally normed test or something like that, or just critical thinking in general. If we're not clear about it, there's not a clear direction on kind of how we focus that work. What happens if I'm also, what happens if we're really clear about the goals, but I'm not clear about the values? Those things that achieve those goals, but not at the expense of these. What happens if I don't tell the superintendent those?
I think you open yourself up for shortcuts and litigation.
How so?
Well, so if you have some, some non-negotiables with values, right? Like, if we're going to do this with integrity, well, I can achieve those goals without integrity, and so if you don't tell me that we're going to do it this way, then I can shortcut whatever. I'll meet what you tell me to meet, but then that opens us up to a whole other litany of issues.
Yeah, I could go off the rails and do some wild things if you aren't telling me with that. No, we hope that's not the case. Even if you don't say, "Follow the law," we would hope you hire a superintendent that follows the law. But it's true, it's possible in there. What else? If I'm not clear about those values, what else could happen?
Well, some of the decisions made could inadvertently come with consequences. Like, if we tell the superintendent, you know, that we want not just reliable transportation, but all-new transportation, but forget to mention that proper maintenance of the schools is important, of the utmost importance. So superintendent goes out, buys all brand-new buses, but then, you know, the schools fall into disrepair. So everybody's getting to school, but no one wants to be there because they're falling apart.
Exactly. So this is the thing, if we're not clear about the, we can be as clear as we want about what to accomplish, and the superintendent's going to do their best generally to get all of those things done. But if we're not clear about those other things that matter, we can't be mad if the superintendent shortcuts something along the way. You could tell me tomorrow, like, "I want us kids, no matter what, make sure every kid can read." And superintendent could very easily say then, "I got to get rid of all the extracurricular activities and fine arts." Now, whether or not we can argue about that, but we didn't say, like, "No, fine arts is also important." Like, we need to have both of these, we need to have a well-balanced education. So setting the values is equally important to setting the goals. And the way a board takes from the high level here about what these values are, you know, we value fine arts, we value financial stability, we value integrity, they actually put them into really clear, quantifiable things. And so when I talk about goals, what I'm speaking about there is like, all right, the vision says we want kids to read. Goals is making it specific. How do I know my kids are reading? Are we looking at STAR or MAP or some other kind of way? Same with what we call constraints in the same thing. They're, the superintendent, "Don't cross these boundaries," is the term you're going to hear us use quite a bit. And when we talk about goals, we talk about SMART goals, I think people are usually familiar with these, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. And then constraints are, again, being clear about this. The clearer we can be as a collective, the less questions anyone has about, "Did we meet it, did we not meet it?" And it's so easy to say and stay vague, because everyone can see what they want in that, until the rubber meets the road and we're trying to decide if we did it. And so that's one thing that we will all push you all to be on here. We don't have any specific thoughts on exactly what you should prioritize and how, but we will push you to be very clear on those things. All of these things in law are owned by the board. The board owns these. The superintendent definitely gets a say. They're the expert in education, they're the one you hire, they should be able to kind of help you steer, but this is board-owned, this is what the community elects you to do. And then underneath that, once the board gets clear on those, then you pass it off to the superintendent, and now the superintendent will go and decide, okay, if we're going to make sure all of our kids can read or have access to be successful in college beyond us, now the superintendent and their team will decide, "How do I know if we're on track for that? Is it ninth-grade readiness? Is it TSI readiness? Is it access to dual-credit courses? What are those progress measures that tell me if I'm on track?" So the board doesn't have to wait until after the kids have left us to figure out if we made it or not, but we can know if we're on track. That's the same for the constraints. If you said, "Staff feedback is important, it's a critical value, don't achieve the goals without trying to get staff feedback," well, then what does it look like? What are those progress measures that tell me that I am getting staff feedback? And once we have that, that's when the superintendent and their team will start to align everything. The strategic planning, the budget they bring you, you approve the budget, but they've got to put it together and kind of share it with you, how that meets those goals, and then creating the alignment in the system. How do we make sure departments know how their work connects to the goals that were set? This is that cascade and that flow that we're going to be working on. And today, where most, we'll spend most of our time is really talk about, what did the community have to say about vision and values? And we're going to dig into that. So before I even move into that summary, any questions here, any thoughts, any feedback, any reactions?
I feel like there's a negative connotation with the word constraints, and that always bothers me.
Yeah.
Constraints are a good thing. And I like to use the roadways as an example, right? So to say that you're going from wherever you came from to get to the DSE today,
Yep.
and you've got traffic laws to make sure we're safe, we're efficient, we're effective, congestion either here nor there, you know, but the solid yellow, the solid white, the dotted lines, the stop signs, the stoplights, those are all constraints. And I think those are positive things.
Mm-hmm.
And so just from my perspective, if you feel like constraints are a negative, oh, that's it, you shift the approach on that and see them for what they are, which is safety, efficiency, effectiveness, so that we can all get to where we're going relatively smoothly.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, and, you know.
I need to weigh in on this one. At that very point, I've been in probably 10 board meetings where people hate that word. Others have changed their word to guardrails, because it is not, connotes a negative tone. Bottom line, you know, if we're going to do this and we have to do it because it's lone-star governance, that's what we'll put down. But I think the point is very important. The example I used to make is like, when I was superintendent in Dallas, I used to train the top 15 principals, and he was one of them. But you had to be a 50/50/50 principal, what's that? Fifty, above the 50th percentile in absolute performance. Above the 50th percentile in value-added performance. And above the 50th percentile in culture and climate. Because some people can get results, but they beat up their staff to do it. That's what you got, that's what you're trying to protect from by having these constraints or guardrails. And y'all, this community lived for the last few years. So this is very, whatever you call it, you've got to understand what it is. Because culture, Trump, strategy, all day long, and so this is a very important conversation you guys need to come to consensus on.
And you can use any words here, so that's the Texas one, but who knows, Texas can change what they call it, guardrails. You could just call it values, these are the values. But there is a reason, generally, we talk about this as a negative. Superintendent achieve third-grade reading, but not at the expense of staff satisfaction. There's a reason I say it that way. What is different between me saying it, "Make sure third graders can read, but not at the expense of staff satisfaction," versus, "Make their third graders read and make sure all staff are happy or satisfied"? What's the difference between those two things? Other than the, like, actual words?
I think it's a quality assurance question. To what level are the students going to be able to read and to what level are the staff happy? Because you can have excellent reading and terrible morale with toxic or counter-cultural leadership. But I think being able to strike that balance. You know, one of the phrases I love to use is, "Excellence is the standard." And if you strive for perfection all the time, the law of diminishing returns will tell you, once you reach excellence, you're going to work so much harder to get to perfection, and the return isn't going to be worth the investment you put in. And so when we look at things like, say it this way versus say it that way, it's, if excellence is the standard, it has to be excellence in both, not just one or the other. And so how do we achieve that balance?
Yep. Any other thoughts? If I say, "Mr. Vasquez, make sure third graders can read, but not at the expense of staff morale," what's, what am I telling him to do? What's the, what's the goal of that statement?
Don't run the teachers into the ground to do it.
I disagree. If I literally say, "Make sure third graders can read, but not at the expense of staff morale," what am I, what's, what's the drive, what am I telling him to achieve?
Priority is get students to read.
Yeah, I'm telling him to, "Make sure students can read, but not at the expense of staff morale." It's important, but what I'm telling him to achieve is, "Make sure third graders can read." If I tell you, "Make sure third graders can read and make sure staff morale is good," what?
Two different goals.
That's two things. And what's, why do school systems exist?
Students.
Every single one, I didn't put these words in your mouth, every single one of y'all said students. And that's why we try to, that's why the reasoning behind it is, to phrase it as a negative, is because the reason school systems exist are for students and to make sure students can learn. Now, that does not mean staff morale is not absolutely critical to that. But we also need to separate, that's when a superintendent has to make a decision to say, "I got to make sure third graders can read, or I got to make sure staff is happy." If those two are in opposition with one another, which one do you want your superintendent to prioritize?
Students.
Students.
Students. And now, oftentimes, those two are not, but I use this as an example. And that's kind of why the state uses the negative version of that. But again, to call it whatever we want, it's really about understanding the why to that. School systems exist to make sure students can succeed, we are going to set goals around students, and there are all these other important things that we need to define, like values. And now, no superintendent I know is going to say, "All right, those, these are all either-or, you can do both, and oftentimes, you need to do both," but that's the reasoning to kind of get to that point. Thank you for raising that. Other thoughts, any reactions here? All right, then, let's get to it. The last question, before we kind of walk you through this, why is prioritizing important? We're going to tell you, you can't have more than five goals, you can't have more than five values. I know there's more than five things that are important to this community, but we're going to tell you, you can only have five. Why is prioritizing important?
To be organized, you have to reach those goals. If you're not prioritizing, you're going to be all over the place.
Yeah, if you're not prioritizing, you're going to be all over the place.
That's exactly right. I think, you know, without, I guess, well, I'll be repeating the question a little bit, you do have to prioritize what is important. Otherwise, you know, you just can't realistically, you know, do everything.
Yeah. Can't realistically do anything.
Like Dr. Nahosa says, "If everything's important, nothing's important."
And this is the hardest thing, in my opinion, about being a board member. You've got so many diverse constituents, so many people that care about so many things, all from the best places. And yet, you're still going to have to say, "No, we, as a board, had to prioritize some things." And that's okay. It doesn't mean the superintendent and his team aren't going to go do this. You're still going to have someone over all of the different extracurricular activities, looking at every single STAR exam, no matter what it is. But if a board tries to look at all of that, we're just going to get lost in the weeds. And oftentimes, when we go through this process about setting goals, it's easy for me as a board member to approach it and be like, "Oh, science is also important, I want to make sure to add science." And it feels good to add. And what I would encourage this board to think about is, when I add something, I'm not just adding something, I'm taking away something. And if I have one goal focused on third-grade reading, say, how much time would we assume roughly the superintendent's going to spend on third-grade reading? Give me a guess.
Only one goal?
Yeah, one goal, that's it.
Hundred percent of the time.
Yeah, more or less a hundred percent of the time. They might have to do some legal things. What happens when I add math? I say, "Third-grade math is also important." What happens to the time that that superintendent spends on reading?
Cut in half.
Literally cut in half. You lose half of your focus on reading, which is okay if those are two priorities. But the more you add, think about it in terms of, you are taking focus away from these other things, and is that worth it? If you're trying to achieve something, how do I make sure the focus is on that to the extent that we need to? So that's a really important thing. And so that's what we ask your community to do, and by "we," I mean you. So this board did a ton of work, and there's two things we're going to use it. We're not going to set goals tonight, we're going to do a workshop later in June about how to actually set these priorities. There's going to be two really important things that you all are going to look at. The first is community feedback. Y'all went to your community, more than a thousand. More than a thousand individual community members showed up and said their opinion about what they wanted Socorro ISD to achieve as far as its vision and what values were important. We're going to actually look at that data tonight. Separately, superintendent and his team went through their own analysis of all of the data available to the school system. And based on their expertise in living this a day in and day out, they put together their own analysis to say, these are the things that we think are really critical to achieve. This board is going to have to take both of these, plus your own lived experiences, and kind of mash all those together and decide what are those priorities that we are going to prioritize. So you have this, there's going to be some small text up here. All of this is in your packet, so you might want to follow along there. And for anyone watching live, it's in the board packet as well. The trustees went out, did a masterful job. I think nine sessions in total, if I remember correctly, in person, and then some virtual ones. And then we had a survey. There were two questions about vision and two questions about values. And it kind of goes to this idea of prioritization. The first thing we asked is, what do you want kids, community members, to know and be able to do because of their time here? And they generated a whole lot of stuff. And then we asked them to prioritize. If you could only choose two of those, which two are the most important? We did the same thing with values. What are the things we should either stop doing or keep doing in Socorro ISD? And if you could only prioritize two of those, what would those two be? You have a little small chart there that kind of walks through where everybody kind of shared what their relation to Socorro ISD was. You had more than eleven hundred members participate. You had about thirty-seven percent of your respondents on the survey were staff. Sixty percent were parents, fifteen percent alumni, thirty-one percent were just general community member, seventeen percent were students, and twenty-nine percent other. And some people might have been both. Some people were an alumni and a parent. Some people were a staff member and a parent. So they might be represented twice, but it kind of gives you a sense of who is responding to your survey and who is showing up at your listening sessions. Again, I know this is super small to see, but you have all the documents in front of you. This chart shares what the community said. But we added up all of what was said in this community meetings and what was said in the survey. And then I read every single one of those responses and started bucketing them into different buckets based on what people said. Everything was free response. People could share what they wanted. And as we bucketed, if some thing got just a few of those, so for instance, one of these things I can remember very vividly, someone felt very passionately that driver's ed was the most important thing. And that is, that's fine. Let's feel that way. But that was not from the wider community, so that's why it didn't make the list in those. It didn't have more than ten, I believe. I kind of moved it off. But overall, here's what she said. I'm just going to talk about the first five. Number one, what came up most frequently, that's the blue bar, was academics. Out of those one thousand one hundred folks, four hundred and twenty-eight of them, more or less, said academics is to prioritize. The highest in that was reading, followed by math, followed by social studies and science to a lesser extent. The second thing that came up over and over and over again was college readiness, the ability to go off and be successful in college explicitly. Third was around social skills. So this was around, how do I interact with one another? How do I interact with my peers? How do I really make a difference in my community, et cetera? Followed by career, specifically talking about, kids need to be ready to go off and be prepared for their careers. And then followed by life skills. These are these things that, you know, changing attire, doing taxes, basic fixes. How do I live life like an adult as I leave this? And there's a whole lot of other things here. Personal agency, problem-solving, communication, et cetera. And then at the bottom, you will see how these were the same or different based on who was responding. It's interesting, here, most of these are the same. So no matter who was responding, everybody said academics was number one. Then you see some difference for parents and staff. They meant, parents, staff, and community members all mentioned college. Students mentioned habits of mind. And alumni mentioned academics a lot. So that's kind of how to read through this and think about this. And on the next page, you can actually see, again, this was all kind of put together based on what was shared, descriptions of this. So I'll just give an example for those reading for academics. Anyone who said academics, this referred to academic achievement in core subjects, strong focus on literacy, reading and critical writing, followed by math, and to a lesser extent, science and social studies. And so on down. So I'm going to give the board a little bit of time to look at this, kind of reflect on it, talk with one another. And then we'll come back and we'll talk about what we saw and what we learned. And for those of you who were part of these community listening sessions, does it confirm what you experienced? Was it a little bit different? How did you, how does this mash with what you did? So I'll give you all some time and let you read through this for about three to four minutes and talk to your neighbors around what you're noticing, what you're seeing, what you have questions on as well. All right, let's come back together. So in looking at what community members responded, both in the live sessions as well as in the survey, before we get into what you noticed, are there any, like, clarifying questions? Like, what does this mean? Is something missing? Does it kind of seem to make sense?
It does.
All right, well, what are y'all noticing? What's resonating? What was confirming? What was different? What was surprising? What are y'all noticing from this?
What, for me, in looking at it, it confirms that as we discuss, you know, the vision and the values, that we're on the right track. If you look at what our responses were at the beginning on what's important, I mean, academics, college readiness, career, all that is right up there at the top.
Mm-hmm.
What surprises me, and maybe not surprises me so much, maybe also a confirmation, but observation, is I think because of the evolving dependency on electronic devices, some of the things that were taught in the home, maybe previously, or because of the electronic devices, now there's a sudden increase in the desire to those, for those things to be priorities as well, like social skills, life skills, personal agency. You know, those are, I mean, that was what we did when we went outside to play until the streetlights went on, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Yep. So the somethings were confirmed exactly. Academics, college, career, that's kind of, has been for a long time what we kind of focus on. But then there are also these new things. And is it because of the changing social dynamics or whatnot? But sure enough, social skills are right up there towards the top of the list about, this is something that people want for their students because of their time in SISD. Thank you for sharing that. What else did y'all notice? Who'd like to share next?
I think for me, one of the items that stood out under community values summary is staff experience. How it's important. You know, I know that oftentimes, we say that we are here for the students, and we are.
Yep.
But I think oftentimes, lost in that conversation is making sure that we're providing the resources necessary for staff across the board to have a good experience in the workplace because ultimately, you know, that trickles down to the experience that students have. And I think also tied into there is the student experience, too. One of the things that, you know, I, you know, have heard consistently is the students are very well aware of the situation that's going on within SISD. And, you know, they want to make sure that they don't lose out on opportunities for that. And I think that that's, that's not a bad thing.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing that. Jumping ahead on me a little bit, went to the values already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll come back there in a second. You know, that's great stuff. That's exactly where we're going to go. But anything else on the vision and the things that we want for kids to be able to know and do that was confirming, surprising? For those of you who were at the meetings, does it address kind of what you heard?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Yeah, and I could say that even from being on the other side of the meeting.
Yeah.
But most of you were there standing up presenting, and I had a butcher block with a crayon, so.
Yeah.
Makes sense. And I think, we were just talking to Mr. Nahara with, with the exception of Mr. Rodriguez, I'm almost the youngest person at the table. And even my parents told me, you know, when you would balance a budget, we use a check register, right? Like, it was a little bit different. Now with a fifteen-year-old, he doesn't know what a checkbook and check register looks like. He does it with a cash app card in his app. And so being proactive, if this is something that we can, you know, look at it included in the curriculum, is being proactive and staying in front of the problem and not reacting to it. Because balancing a budget, to me, I still use Microsoft Excel. Trying to do that with my fifteen-year-old is going to look completely different. And so how do we approach that?
Yeah. I think, Mr. Gata, I think I heard you mentioning something about that, about what you heard from the students?
Well, in all means I went to, I was mostly amazed that the students wanted the dollars and cents, and that's what, so did the parents.
Yeah.
That they didn't have that, they didn't know how to use a credit card or how to balance a budget. Not so much a checkbook, kids don't know about checkbooks, but they wanted the dollars and cents. And the kids mentioned that throughout, parents as well.
Yep. And thank you for sharing that. And so just a quick note, in the definition, I'm sure you all can see, but for folks listening, "Life skills" was kind of written as preparing students for life by emphasizing financial literacy, essential real-world skills like managing taxes, car maintenance, home act, and fostering professionalism. And I think it's really interesting, when you look up here under students, "Life skills" was on their list of top four. So that's something, that's a really interesting trend to draw. Thank you for sharing that.
Well, and if I could also add, I think one of the things that, like Mr. Woodcraft was saying, in participating in those meetings, a lot of perspectives that oftentimes we hear were brought up from students and from parents, you know, mentioning that, you know, sometimes, you know, not everyone wants to do college, right? And, you know, we want to do something else and, you know, emphasize on those important life skills, which I think that's what stands out to me the most here, that that is tied here on those, on those top five.
All right, thank you. Anything else under values, or vision, sorry, stood out, was interesting? All right, we're going to switch to values in a second, but I'm actually going to ask you to make some switches real quick. Can we, if you will oblige me? If we can switch trustee Rodriguez, if you can switch with trustee Macias, and then trustee Smith with superintendent Vescas. Get some new, did some pairings allow y'all to start to bring in other conversations?
I'm going to test you, Mr. Mackey. Can you still remember our names?
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Plates are different.
All right. So I'll do a quick overview here for the values. Same thing, what was asked was, again, what are the things that Socorro ISD should either keep doing or stop doing as it pursues its goals? And then, if you name a bunch of things, what are the two you prioritize? The first thing you'll notice is that there are a lot more things listed up here, and that's okay because people can go all over the place. The first one was honed in on what we want students to know and do. This one could be anything, all of these other values that are important. And you see a pretty wide gap, especially on the first two to three, and then it kind of evens out. So a quick just summary for those who can't see. Going in order on this, sorry. Pull my page back. Far and away, the first one was staff experiences, followed by finances, followed by administrative salaries, student experiences, and fine arts. And then to a lesser degree, test prep and discipline came up a lot. So what we mean by those, again, all of those key words are listed on the actual sheet. And folks can look at it online on what that looks like and what that means. Staff experience relates to staff experience on campuses, focusing on workload, retention of high-quality instructors, effectiveness of development, emphasis on supporting teachers emphasis on supporting teachers to ensure they have resources and the backing they need. "Finances" is around a commitment to fiscal responsibility, transparency, frugality, and to ensure the district's long-term financial health and sustainability. "Administrative Salaries" refers to concerns about size of administration or central office relative to campus size and the proportion of salaries allocated. "Student Experience" refers to prioritizing high-quality student experiences. And then "Fine Arts" is maintaining access to fine arts programs, including visual or performing arts. "Test Prep" is around minimizing test preparation and practice of teaching to the test, et cetera. And again, these are all broad, these are, we asked people for their feedback and how they felt and they thought, and so there's a lot of reality in this. It's gonna be this organization, this team of eight's job to sort through this and then come up with, what does clarity look like around, what does success here look like? So I'm gonna give you some time, feel free to look through the "Values", and then talk with, uh, your new table groups, and what did you notice, what was confirming? What's different? What's surprising? So I'll give you all some minutes to do that.
So I think with the "Values" piece, what it shows is, there's the bias, because this started.
That's what I was gonna say.
And that's just. Or the top five were directly tied to those.
Been true. I mentioned it. It's because it happened. The first deal, who we had was. The district, I was gonna say.
I'm not saying they're not important.
No.
Bias there is based on.
Yeah, you're right. Your assumption, you're right. That's right. I saw it, and I said the same thing too. We're talking finance. Even now.
Ranks.
The more workload.
As of.
They are important, but. There was a big difference.
What's been received.
You don't think, Marty Ben?
I agree. If it's doing or avoid doing.
Those layoffs. Budget concerns.
What's interesting.
Yeah.
Me and Ash.
To. With.
Is. Safe.
With. Yep. Truly, that's what we should be.
Fair, if we had that exact same conversation, instead of fine arts, athletics. Instead of teachers, it was.
Opportunities.
People that are that passionate. Our two, this was announced well before. Fine arts and all that. Or that happened.
We, we, we just did the fine arts, I think, and then we did this, correct? We did, we didn't do the layoffs.
Yeah.
The fine arts, and then this was.
My fine arts.
Was it the twenty?
Conversation. Like, like, four days later, you started.
And that's.
All that emotion.
And if you look at the, let's look at.
Myself.
At the staff. No, it wasn't.
I could separate the two.
It's, because we. Maybe that's what we have. Maybe that's what we have. So we, we, you know, continue.
I know, I mean.
That's why I'm saying, I really think.
There are people.
But that's.
That's really good.
And actually.
Access to. Although the price is still the same.
And whenever. I think it's. They make them out.
Access to.
Was it stupid? Stupid? That's.
Like we had, um, had almost a dozen of those, I think.
Would open my eyes. Just that.
On the same, like even at U-Town.
Any?
We were still able to.
There was a. That's not. I bet.
Really?
Then the other adult.
Yeah.
Likes.
I mean, I think my daughters, all their books.
And then first. And of course, that's. Even not. The dad.
Do.
Actually have this.
Athletics, I think.
Yeah.
Not.
I mean, it creates a negative.
And the students, they.
Put it in a binder, so that. It felt better with the.
Students are the. So. Discipline themselves. That'll. Is every. Fine art system.
Take about another 30 seconds. There's some great conversation.
They're thinking about other people. They want their teachers.
Alright. What came up? Trustee Rodriguez kind of got us started before, noticing the importance of staff, um, experience as well as student experience. And again, one note, just for data-wise, there's a whole lot of things in those buckets. So someone might have been really responsive about teacher retention, whereas someone else was really passionate about professional development. So all that came into staff experience as a broad one to get these categories. So all, you've always gotta be taking that with a grain of salt, because you don't know exactly which part, but that's what y'all have been elected to do, whether you were at those meetings, participating, leading it, or on the campaign trail, hearing from folks. I know you all heard this. So what else came up in looking at this? What surprised you? What was confirming, et cetera?
No, well, I was just sharing with, uh, interim Superintendent Vazquez, that, um, at least the top five items were the number one thing that, um, at least for myself, I did participate in the community meetings, one of them. Um, but like you mentioned, being out on the campaign trail and, you know, talking to folks across the board, um, I mean, it, it, it really confirms, um, what the pulse in the community is, right? I was, I was sharing with Mr. Vazquez, um, that a lot of the folks that participated in, that participated in these meetings, of course, the majority of them were parents. Um, but at least, you know, for myself, a lot of the folks that I was talking to, uh, were older voters, voters that don't necessarily have, um, children in the district, um, not, that per se don't have a stake in the district, but are still very concerned with what's going on. And so, um, I think that it was very surprising that, you know, despite speaking to very different audiences, it's still the same, right? The priorities are still the same.
Yeah, that's a, it's a great thing to, to understand and see, is that, you know, we only heard from 1,100 folks, it's a small sliver of our entire community, but talking to other people who might not have filled this out, I'm hearing the same trends. Thank you.
Mackey.
Yes, sir.
Mackey, I need to make a point here. One thing I was surprised about is, uh, in this community, despite the issues that were front and center, is the amazingly low voter turnout. Um, and I think there is an over-reliance on employee groups as to get your feedback. And, uh, and the board belongs, the community belongs to the board. And I think this is a first good step, but just this conversation indicates that there's a lot to do here. And you don't need, and I think I've also learned that either one of the collective impact groups in the region is not as powerful as we or they think they are. But I think this is a great opportunity with a new board, with a new superintendent, to really uptick, um, meaningful substantive participation. I was actually shocked by the voter turnout. With everything that's at stake in this election, I was actually, I've never seen anything like this in, in all the different communities that I serve, that I've served. So anyway, I think, but that's why I'm glad that you're taking this conversation very seriously.
And that'll be something we'll, this board will work through and we'll help support you all through. It's our belief that, just like in the different roles and responsibilities, the board should have its own community outreach process to continue to get this feedback on an ongoing basis, not just one time when we want some information from you, but how are we opening this conversation up long-term in a sustainable way? Separate from how the superintendent is engaging the community members around customer service. Alright, what else? What else came up in here?
Mr. Mackey, my observation is, I think the areas that ranked high, um, are, are, I don't know if skew is the best word, but, um, I think it's appropriate, uh, because of the current situation. You know, when you look at its finances, its, uh, staff experience, administrative, uh, salaries, et cetera. And, um, I, I think if we had taken this survey maybe, or, or had engaged in these, uh, listening sessions at a different time, um, you know, maybe the outcomes would have been different. Um, because when you do, uh, outside, maybe a year ago, you know, the things that we were hearing were completely different. Um, look at where safety ranked, and yet safety seems to be one of the top priorities across the state. I mean, they, we've, we've received safety grants to improve, and yet when you look at where, I mean, it's like towards the bottom. I was surprised to see dress code there, um, although it is all the way towards the bottom. But when you think about, um, the fact that some of the respondents, you know, were students, okay? You know, I, I understand, et cetera. But yeah, I, I definitely think, just observing what the cat, top categories are, there's a skew there because of the current situation and what the focus has been in the media.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's not gone beyond, um, uh, the current situation. There's no focus on, uh, the successes across the district, the outcomes of our students, you know? Hopefully graduations are coming up, so that's gonna be different. Um, and yet we need to, you know, not forget about these things, but also remember repeatedly that student outcomes, that is why we're here, for the students.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I want to comment on two points there. Number one is, context matters. No matter when you take the survey, there's gonna be something that's happening that is getting attention. That's not right, that's not wrong. It just is what it is, and that's your job. It's not a perfect science to sort through that, you know? How much of this was the moment versus how much is truly there? Because we also do want to respond to the moment in a lot of times. Um, as you build this process, you all will build the process by which ideally, you're revisiting this on a regular basis. Not every year, because you don't want to be changing back and forth like we talked about. But every three years, every four years or whatnot, how do we go back and continue to get this information and make those adjustments? The second thing that I want to touch on, and oftentimes, I, I think it's just natural, going back to the earlier conversation about how constraints feels negative, even though it's not intended to be that way. I think it's easy to read these and say like, oh, "Staff Experience" refers to staff experience on campus, focusing on workload, retention of high-quality instructors. It's easy to take those in the negative. As the one who read every single response that was written, yes, there are some people that are like, oh, I feel like I'm not getting the support I need. But there was other responses that said, I love the support I get, please don't take it away. So not all of these come from a negative place either. Um, so I think it's just important to think about that this is more the values. Yes, there's always things we can do to improve, but there's also a lot of things going right. But how are we distilling from all of this, the messiness? What's the value that we're really trying to protect? And let's try to continue to make sure that we protect that one. So thank you for that.
And I think to Mr. Nahara's point, almost kind of piggybacking off what Dr. Hinojosa said. And he talked about low voter turnout, and, and we talked about the bias because of the emotion of the time. I don't know that we would have gotten the turnout for these meetings had we not had that emotional tie to what was going on.
Right.
The turnout could have been a lot lower because there wasn't something so emotional as finances and fine arts and teachers' livelihoods. And I think that drove people to these meetings. It may not have been, it definitely wasn't the intended topic of discussion, because these were set up before that news had broke. But people came out. And so like, I don't want to entirely discredit them.
Yeah.
Because of that emotion.
Right.
But I definitely think there may be a bias. Had we talked about cutting athletics instead of fine arts, I think you would have saw that switch, right? Um, but I, I would like to see through that and get to the real heart of the matter, which is people cared, and they turned out in droves. I was ecstatic when I saw 1,100. I thought that was great.
Yeah.
It came with an unfortunate emotional tie, uh, but I think to get that level of input is, is critical.
Yeah. And I will just note, I mean, that, I'll quote, "Never waste a, never waste a crisis." Like, this is a real crisis that y'all are having to sort through in real life, but it's resulted in some engagement. How do we keep that engagement in our schools and continue to build upon that as an opportunity here?
And if I could also add, just also something that Mr. Nahara had talked about, um, here I see alumni, um, which I assume are young adults that may have graduated from Socorro ISD, but also students, uh, you know, those are the, the lowest percentage, uh, percentages in terms of participation. And so I think, um, you know, uh, when you talk about student outcomes, um, it's important to take into account student perspectives.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and their experiences and working towards making sure that, um, we're hearing directly from them and that we're, you know, um, yeah, uh, numerizing those concerns, turning that into data, uh, but increasing, you know, that participation as well, because I think that we can learn a lot, uh, from our students and their experiences, um, since they're the ones that are, uh, really benefiting from the programs that we're establishing and that we're, we're providing resources for.
Absolutely. And this is only the start. This is one time we went out to get feedback.
That's right.
Um, what's going to happen as you all go through and set this? There will be more opportunities for you to say, alright, you're gonna sort through this, you're gonna take some other pieces of data, you're gonna put together and start to draft your priorities. My gut tells me you're probably gonna want to take it back to folk. So how do we go back to students? How do we go back to the parents and say, we heard what you said, here is our best estimate of what we're gonna look at, give us some feedback on it. Are we on the right track or not? So there's opportunities like that, that you can build those in very intentionally, using what you learned here. Any other parting thoughts on the "Values" here?
One thing I want to share is, I think what's very important that you said is that, when are we gonna go back? Because I agree that this was timely feedback. Uh, again, it was not the perfect time to go out, but we even discussed, should we cancel it? Should we go out? No, we need to go out and listen. That's what we're here for. So how can we consistently go out so that things continue to rise to the top, so that we can address? That where we're making data different, uh, data-driven responses to, and allocating resources to what's necessary. So the first thing, as you mentioned, staff experience. So what's important to the majority is, if we take care of our adults, they're gonna take care of our students, which is why we're here. So those are the things that we have to look at. Um, and I, I think the biggest piece is, when are we gonna go out and how consistently are we gonna go out? And how do we make it to those that possibly can't come and see us? Because that's one thing that we discussed, that even with the volatility, and, you know, we should have expected more, even with this situation, even the 1,100 was great, but I would have expected maybe 5,000, 10,000. How do we get to them? You know, do we go, how do we get to, you know, the panecito with a grandma, or how do we get to things that, that truly, we get to hear what everybody has to say, so that we're truly focusing on that student experience to continue to move our district forward? We are that district of choice. We gotta continue to have it there.
Oy, I got bad news and good for you, good news for you on that point. Bad news is, I don't know the answer to that. But the good news is, the answer is in this room. And that's what you all are going to get to decide and think about. I've seen boards all over the nation do totally different things, some really unique things. I've seen them, when they have it, they build a segment where they do these surveys every six months, but they make sure it's in all the community centers. They make sure it's at the YMCA, at the, at the pre-K places. They partner with them and really get out. There's lots of ways to do this. Y'all will get to design your own and find a way to get that feedback and, and do it in a way that you're not only getting from the community, what this feedback is, but also sharing back with them. Here's, we heard you, and here's what we're doing and why we're doing it. Thank you for that.
Sounds like a Tazby presentation to me. Establishing a community engagement program that improves.
Yeah.
Community feedback.
I could see that. Any other thoughts, parting thoughts here, any kind of reactions? So what we're gonna do is, we're actually set this aside. This is one data point. It's not the only data point. It was 1,100 people and their voices, and those voices absolutely matter, but as we mentioned, it's not everybody. It's a piece of this that I'm combining with who I talked to on the campaign trail, um, who I heard when I'm at the grocery store, what I know. We're also gonna put this together with the administration, the folks that you pay to be here every single day and do this work on behalf of kids. Um, so we've asked them to kind of put together a, they actually went through a pretty robust process to look at all the data sources. So with this, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, interim Superintendent Vazquez to overview. You wanna come up here?
I'll think it from here, but.
Alright. Come on, there you go. And then we're gonna have the same kind of discussion on this. So be jotting down questions or whatnot, uh, as we go.
Alright, well, good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and welcome to, and congratulations to the new board members. We're happy to have you here. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez here is actually a former student of mine when I was a principal at Horizon Heights, so, and he's my boss now. How awesome is that? I hope I never put you in detention or I didn't.
Not that I can recall.
I thought your wife was your boss.
Well, that's you, yeah. Uh, but, um, really excited to begin this work with you all. So as, uh, Mr. Mackey pointed out, we, uh, met at, as the administrative team, as our superintendent's cabinet, some other key, uh, directors throughout the district, about a month ago. And this was guided by Andrew Kim, who walked us through this process and priority setting. And as he said, we had done a deep dive into all this data to include financial reports, uh, PIMs data, enrollment trends, and so forth. And this is how we developed, um, what we're about, about to present to you this evening. So what we did, there were about 15 to 20 of us in a room, and Mr. Kim said, I want you to write down on a post-it note, one, one item per post-it note. I'm gonna give you about a minute. What do you think, based on looking at all the data, what are the priorities for the district? We had about a minute or so to, to jot that down, and we came up with 51 responses, the 15 to 20 of us. And, and these are them right there. Uh, verbatim, to what we wrote. So once we did that, we kind of noticed some trends there. There were a lot of, of responses based on finance, lots of based on student accountability and so forth. So we decided to, to group those and color-code those, and that's what we, we have here. From there, once we grouped, we, we, we put them into five different buckets, uh, to, to categorize these. Then he had us do something else. He says, I want you to give these a point value. And from the highest to the lowest, and so we can rank to see what are of these five categories, what is the most important and what is the least important, although all of them are very important, but of these five, how would you rank these? So once we did that, this is what, these are the rankings in order, and these are the categories that we selected. First was building the fund balance and improving the financial stability of the district. That's what the administration felt was the highest priority. Second priority was improving student outcomes reflected in accountability measures. Third was reducing the health fund transfer through benefits design. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about this in just a second. Fourth was building rapport, uh, excuse me, building and supporting efficient processes. And the fifth was rebuilding stakeholder trust and support. So once we did this, we looked at the. So once we did this, we looked at the listening session feedback that we just looked at right now. And we noticed that there was, there were a lot of commonalities based on what the community said and based on what we came up with. And some of the keywords that we saw in these listening sessions are there on the right, but you know, with regard to the building the fund balance and the financial stability, we heard things like finance, as you saw, was important, redundancies, increasing enrollment and attendance as that ties to funding. The second one, the student outcomes, you know, we heard things like you saw here, academics was important to everybody, all of the groups. So that was, that reflected what we saw as well. The third one, reducing the health fund transfer through benefits redesign. That's not really anything that we noticed that was brought up during these listening sessions, but it's something that we've been keenly aware of as a district and knowing how that really contributes to our financial stability. And again, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. So we kind of put that in a different shade of green because it relates back to the first priority. And then fourth, building and supporting efficient processes. We all know that we need to, you know, streamline, eliminate redundancies, find ways to, you know, get the return on our investment in everything, all of our programs and so forth. So that's something that we see as important. We heard that in the listening sessions as well. And then finally, something I know we're all aware of is just rebuilding that trust and support within the community. And we saw that a lot, just with the, we were talking about the staff experiences, student experiences, that community engagement. So that's something that we heard over and over in the listening sessions, and that's something that we felt as well as a district administration. So based on that, so administration now is making these recommendations to the board as you begin to develop the district's goals. So the first one is increasing the percentage of graduates who are college, career and military ready. And the measures that we'd be coming back with for the project progress measure, excuse me, would be the enrollment in college prep courses, industry certifications and enrollment in dual credit courses. That's, that was what we'd be coming back to you with. Second one, well, second one and the fifth one, the last one, they're both related to performance on the third grade star assessment. We want to increase achievement in the, at the meets and meets level and above. By looking at third grade, we're doing two things. We're looking backwards, are the lower grades preparing our students, are building the foundational skills to prepare our students to take the third grade test? But then also looking forward, that serves as a baseline and an indicator for future success for our students. So we think it's important to look at these areas, this area as well as it sets the tone for the rest of their elementary grades. And then for the potential measures, we're looking at interim assessments, early childhood assessments and star performance. The third one is just overall achievement at the meets performance on all state assessments. You know, as you may know, we have the approaches level meet standard and exceeds the standard. But we really want to focus, we're not concerned with approaches. We want people to meet, our students to meet the standard. So we want to increase that performance on all assessments. And then finally, increasing middle school achievement at meets performance level on assessments in math. So one thing that the score independent school district does better than most is we test most of our eighth grade students on the Algebra I assessment, which is typically given at the ninth grade level. Out of the, all of the middle schools in the region, Socorro had, was in the top 10. We had all 10 schools, the top 10 schools were from our district on Algebra I performance this past year. And we also had 15 out of the top 18 schools. So that's something that we do a great job of. But in order to achieve that, in order for these students to do well at the eighth grade algebra, on the eighth grade algebra test, we need to, we accelerate their learning at the sixth and seventh grade levels. Sixth graders are basically learning seventh grade material, seventh graders are learning eighth grade material. So we want to accelerate that, but in order for them to do well at the eighth grade level, we also need to monitor what they're doing at the sixth and seventh grade. So that's why we chose this one as well. So in terms of goals and visions, this is what administration is recommending to the board as you develop these. In terms of the values or the constraints, we, excuse me, we want to ensure the district, the financial solvency of the district. That's first and foremost. When we meet at the regular board meeting next month, when you adopt the budget, there's a really strong possibility that we're going to present to you a balanced budget or we're going to come really, really close, which is incredible considering where we were a year ago. That doesn't mean we're out of the woods by any means. We still don't have any money in the bank. We need to ensure that we have our, build up our reserves to ensure that we don't have to take out any more loans. We want to ensure that we don't, we don't have to do any more reductions in force. So we, it's going to be vitally important that we not only balance the budget, but also build up our reserves. Second one, this is what I was talking a little bit about earlier, was the, ensure that the district health plan is self-sufficient. So our current health plan, to be self-sufficient, we need about $58 million in the health fund. So if you can imagine a bucket, the health fund bucket, the district contributes $555 per month per employee into this bucket. And we get pretty decent ways, but then we also need the employees to contribute. So when they pick their health plan, what they contribute on a monthly basis on their own, what they do through the co-pays and so forth, they also contribute into this bucket. Remember, we need about $58 million to be self-sufficient. We're only getting to about $49, $50 million. So every year, the district is having, on top of the $555 per employee per month, we're also having to infuse another eight to 10 million, and that's also unsustainable. So that's something that we feel is going to be really important when we begin our work for the next school year, is have a redesign to ensure that it truly is a self-sufficient healthcare for the district. Another thing that I talked about earlier too is just ensuring that we have efficient district operations. Again, reducing the redundancies, looking, making sure that we're getting the return on our investments. So we're going to be looking at the program assessments, internal audit reports, just to ensure that we are streamlining our processes. Oh, this came up several times here, just with our discussion earlier, but just the high quality experiences for our student and the high level of satisfaction for our staff. I was sharing with Manny earlier that when I was a school principal, I had a real simple philosophy, and I think Mariel kind of pointed it out a little bit, is if my teachers were happy, my students were going to be happy. Students were happy, parents are going to be happy. So I didn't make the teachers happy by letting them run wild and do whatever they wanted, but I made sure that they had the tools necessary to be successful. And that's what made them happy. So I think that's one thing that we want to ensure is that we are supporting our teachers and providing them with the tools necessary to be successful. So we want to measure this though by doing climate surveys for our staff and students. We also want to look at our students participating in programs. What do those numbers look like? If students are participating, they're probably having a pretty good experience, whether it's in athletics, fine arts, or any other sort of extracurricular activity. And then finally, we want to ensure, you know, our commitment to building stakeholder trust and support. We've taken our licks this, over this past year or so in, on social media and really in the court of public opinion. And I think one thing that's come up is, you know, we do have a great district and there are lots of good things going on, but sometimes that gets overshadowed. So it's going to be a matter of just, you know, ensuring that we are getting out there, we are stating facts. But we're also doing climate surveys for the parents as well and the community. Are we doing the job that we're supposed to be doing as a school district in educating our kids? And are we doing a, are we good stewards of our finances? So we want to measure that as well. We also want to have more community engagement in terms of committees of community members. So one thing that's on the agenda for Wednesday's regular board meeting is a finance committee. So as we start looking at our financial situation for next year, we're going to be asking you all to be thinking of, and Daniel Escobar will be going over this, but we would like for you all to nominate two people from the community who you would like to serve on this committee. I'll be nominating two as well. We may also have some elected officials be a part of this. That way we can all take a deep dive into our finances and start looking at what are ways that we can get back to financial stability within the district. So again, through that, just through that community engagement. So these are the values that the administration is recommending to the board for your consideration. Do you all have any questions on any of this? Yes, sir.
Mr. Vazquez, I'm going to go back to vision real quick. So when we look at the first one for increased percentages of graduates who are college, career or military ready. When I look at the potential measures, and this is from a military background, a lot of these tie indirectly into military ready, but I don't see a direct measure for military readiness. So is there something that we can do where we look at ASVAB preparedness, or fitness scores, or ROTC? Or is there a track like we currently have for law enforcement, right, that ties in? What are those measures to make sure that they're military ready as well?
The way that, in state accountability, what they look at and the way it's measured is how many students are actually enlisted within the program. They don't go as deep as that, as like ROTC participation and so forth. But the way it's measured is through enroll, enlist, have you enlisted already in the military? But those are also things that we can look at, because typically it is ROTC students and your law enforcement students who do join the service.
Yeah, and I think, because there's several different ways to enter service, right? You can go to college, you can do ROTC there, you can go in as an officer, right? There's different ways to do that.
Exactly.
And so making sure that they're prepared for that is great.
Yeah.
Right, but when we look at industry certs, that doesn't really fit, right? And so trying to find, I don't know if I want to make a separate, but making sure that we think specifically military ready for a direct measure, I think would help.
And these are just examples of some of the measures, but we can certainly add that as well for the military readiness.
So a few things just as process here. This board will have a deep dive into actually having this conversation and starting to finalize what these are. These are all examples based on what the superintendent and their team said. It's a starting point. Before we get into, was what I'm going to ask you to do, is actually in a little bit, you know, where do you see similarities compared to where the community was? Where do you see differences? What's coming up from this? What resonates, what doesn't? We'll get to that in a second. But before we do, any other clarifying questions? Like, what do you mean by X? Or what do you prioritize by Y? Any other clarifying questions for interim superintendent Vazquez or the team as it relates to this? Alright, well, if not, then we'll go to the other questions. So where do you see alignment between the community survey and what the superintendent has presented? How are you interpreting what they're presenting as a focus? Does that seem to resonate or not? And then what's rising up to the top for you in importance? We kind of heard Trustee Woodcraft mention military readiness came to mind immediately. What are other thoughts y'all are having as you reflect upon this?
I think an initial take, the top five that came from the staff perspective, in my opinion align. You know, I think there's that outlier of the health fund transfer, but I think that's a valid concern. You know, when we look at a 6%-ish pay increase, but then $400 a month in healthcare costs, like, do they really have a better quality of life because of that? Or are we actually just taking a step back? And so to see that nested, I think was helpful. But I don't think the parents and students and community members are that much different from the administration from what I can see. I think this seems to be in a lockstep across, you know, all of the stakeholders for SISD.
Thank you. That's what we're trying to get to. There's two different things here. Where are we seeing those alignment? Thank you for sharing that with Trustee Woodcraft. Other thoughts, reactions, questions?
I'm glad to see that the administrative draft of potential vision and goals aligns with the training that we've received to date in that they're all student outcome based. Because, I mean, that's why we're here.
Oh, here, that's why school systems exist.
Exactly, and so I think that's, that's great. And the values or the constraints as well. You know, not, they align, but they also identify, okay, you know, not at the expense of this.
Yep.
So.
Make sure our kids are college, career, military readiness, but not at the expense of trust in our schools or
Right.
staff experience. Thank you. Other thoughts, reactions?
I do appreciate that, that reducing the health fund transfer through benefits redesign was included in the five priority areas, because I think Mr. Vazquez made a great point. Maybe that's something that's not widely talked about, but it is still very important. I know that because, you know, obviously you hear it here, but also directly from a lot of educators and a lot of staff.
Yeah, and this illustrates a perfect point in that if we just ask the community, who has a lot of value to share, they're not going to know the nuance to that level. They're not going to be able to specifically say the health fund transfer. That's why we also go and ask the administration, whether it's about the nuances of finances or about how we should think about measuring this. Should it be star meets, or should it be a growth measure, or should it be all these other things? So we're getting actually both sides, and then the board will get to marry these two elements together and decide what makes the most sense. So thank you for raising that point, Trustee Rodriguez. Other thoughts or reactions, alignments, misalignments?
Well, I mean, we all know that we need to fix the fund balance.
Yeah.
That's the number one thing. And also getting the community's trust. But I'm grateful because the student, you know, succession, we want them to succeed, continue going to college and increase in math scores, so that's one of the priorities.
Yeah, there's some priorities here. I think one interesting thing will be very, when we come together to like actually talk about this, while we could say, yeah, we all are on the same page that college and career readiness matters, our community agreed, our administration agreed. But the devil's in the details, and what does winning look like? Is it getting an IBC? Is it enrolling in the military? Is it enrolling in college? Is it staying in college? There's going to be a whole lot of things you all are going to have to discuss about what does truly winning look like and get as clear as possible on that. So that's, that's still to come, that's the fun. Other thoughts, reactions, questions? Alright, so now you've got these two pieces of information. No action yet, but to mull on them. Talk to people as you go about your daily lives, think about it. We will be working with you all to schedule some time, likely in June, where this board's going to come together for a workshop, and that will be a true workshop. You will actually spend the first part actually starting to craft out what the goals are going to be, craft out what the constraints will be, or whatever we want to call them, guardrails, values, however y'all want to define it. And then once the board actually kind of gets that sense, then the administration's going to start, what's the progress measure? If we're trying to look at college enrollment, what do I need to look at now? What do I look at in the winter? What tells me if I'm on track or not? So there's going to be a whole set of things that will cascade from all of that. So real quick on the next steps, I think this is important just to cover. You don't need to write it down, you're going to have access to it. You're going to mull on this, you're going to think about this as it relates, how these connections are. Was there anything in the community that they mentioned that is missing here that we would want to add? Those are the things y'all have to grapple with. In June, we'll actually do the priority setting. It won't be finalized, but we'll have a clear idea of, here's what we as a board want to prioritize, both for the goals and for the constraints. And at that same time, the superintendent search, which we'll get into here in a moment, will commence for a full-time superintendent. And that will take place throughout the summer. Once this board clarifies what its goals are, the vision and the values, in July, the board's going to look at the progress measure. So in that time, the administration's going to say, alright, we're going to put some progress measure this. We'll start putting some numbers to it. We'll bring it back to you probably in July and get your input. Is that aligning with what you meant when you said college readiness or not? Do we need to make a change? You'll start to think about, okay, if we're going to measure college readiness and we're saying that's a priority, well, when are we going to find out if we're making progress or not? We can't just wait until the kid goes to college, we should look at what's on track. So you'll start to think about a calendar, about when we as a community and as a board will start to monitor these things. And then you're going to finalize these priorities by the time August rolls around and the school year starts. So you all have a clear map of where we're trying to go for Socorro ISD. Then throughout the fall, administration's doing work. They're trying to align all of their work to achieving the priorities that got set. If we say fund balance is one of those constraints, how are we organizing our work to make sure we're building the fund balance in the way that we can? And then the board will focus on monitoring progress. Alright, we said fund balance is important. Every once in a while, we're going to see a progress and see, are we on track or not?
Let me interject right there. Part of that goes to the superintendent's evaluation. The low point in my career is in October of 2008 where I laid off 1,000 teachers. Because we had a $64 million hole and we had $32 million in reserve. And I got on a landslide vote of five to four, the board declared financial exigency. No money was missing, no money was stolen, we just didn't have good position control and we hired too many people. We were sloppy. I told the board that we could fix it and... I told the board that we could fix it, and that I deserved to be fired, because I'm accountable for everything. They let me stay, I fixed it, and then they let me stay for five more years, and then they rehired me. But part of that, every since then, when you look at measurable outcomes for the budget, is we look at having a surplus budget every year. And we also looked at, right now, there are other indicators. Like, you're gonna get an F rating on your first rating, and that is another thing that we have to be figuring out, by when can we solve this? It took me 10 years, I had to go and come back to get rid of material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in the audit. And we had to hire, and nobody wanted to bid for our work. It was so bad. But when I left them, because we had these measurable goals in my evaluation instrument, stuff rolls downhill fast, you know? They were held accountable for it. And so, we never overspent the budget again. When I left Dallas in '20, and they've had to spend, because the state's not helping them, I left them with a billion-dollar reserve. And yet, we had all these programs for kids, because they were aligned to goals and outcomes. And some people don't take this work seriously. Good things happen by design, not by accident, and it takes discipline to execute on these. But these are all very doable. But you gotta look, you gotta get the right measures, and you gotta do it for the long haul. And, you know, I'm very proud to say that Dallas now has the best school board they've ever had in history. And we had five superintendents in the five years, the years I was here in that puzzle, and one went to prison, to what they have now. And despite the state not giving them any money, they actually grew students this past year, because they had the right stuff that the families wanted. So, this is not rocket science, but there is, we went from a culture of entitlement to a culture of accountability. And the taxpayers are the ones that gave us a tax ratification election and at least $5 billion worth of bond funds to rebuild all of our facilities. But it starts at the top, and so, it just takes hard work, being smart, humble, hungry, and smart, and having a plan, and then executing. And it starts right here, right now.
Who watches board meetings? Not you all, I know you all watch board meetings. Who watches board meetings?
It's our community members.
It's our community members?
Faculty staff.
Yeah, it's not your community members. It is your staff that watch board meetings. There are some community members, but we pull the numbers on live streaming, I can guarantee you, it's majority of your faculty and staff that watch it. And so, it makes sense to know that how we operate here is gonna cascade all the way through. And so, if we operate with a focus and a consistency, say, no, we said, these student outcomes and this fund balance is important, and we're gonna check in on that, you better believe staff is gonna be paying attention to that. It's your job to tell your community. And if your community truly did watch your board meetings, you wouldn't need call-out systems to tell us that this school was closed. They could just watch it on the board meeting. But no one's really watching that. There are some, not saying there's not, I'm just saying, far and wide, it's staff. And this is a staff culture communication tool. What you focus on, your system will focus on. So, just finishing up real quick here, fall semester, it's about that consistency. How does the board align its work to focus on the priorities? How does the administration roll that all the way downhill? And then, in the spring, you're actually gonna see this stuff start to come to the surface. You're gonna continue to adjust. You're gonna learn things. Things you try in all the best intents aren't gonna work. There's gonna be some things that are just going off, and we saw a fall over here, or something didn't go right over there. And that's okay, that's learning. So, how do we adjust based on what we're learning to try to get to those outcomes? Then, a budget will start being planned, and you'll be back in budget season. And next time, your administration's gonna be able to bring you a budget that aligns to the priorities that you set. So, you should be able to expect to see that. And then, you're gonna look at, what do we need to adjust? Maybe we achieved one of our goals already. Maybe that shouldn't be a goal anymore. Or maybe we learned something, that that didn't quite work the way we wanted to, we need to tweak things. And so, it's a culture of continuous improvement that comes from that. So, that's the direction we're going. I'm super excited to do the work alongside of y'all. It is, in my experience, some of the most meaningful, fun, and frustrating work that a board can engage in, but it can mean everything for your community and for your school system. So, before we transition to superintendent search, I just want to pause there, see if anyone has any thoughts, questions, reactions, things that are top of mind as it relates the priority setting process that we'll go through. All right. We've got a work cut out for us. So, sleep on this, put this under your pillow. Oh, go ahead.
Question, sir. So, aside from reflecting on this, will we be receiving any more homework prior to the June planned session?
You will receive some homework to do in advance, but you'll also have time to do it there. And the homework, I'll tell you the homework now, is to reflect on this. You've seen what the administration says. You've seen what the community says. You have your own experiences. I'm gonna ask folks to come with no more than five. If you were to write your own goals, what would be the goal? And not with the numbers and all that, but third-grade reading, or college as measured by enrollment, or something like that. I'm gonna ask you all to come with those, as well as, what are the values? Not necessarily, like, a long sentence about it, but the value that I have seen and heard from the community is transparency or staff experience. I'm gonna ask you to come from those. And so, each of you individually, using these as a foundation, are gonna come with those, and we are gonna massage those together as a team of eight to get down to what are the not my priorities or your priorities? What is Socorro ISD's priorities?
Perfect.
But I'll remind you all as we get that scheduled.
Thank you, sir.
All right. With that, we're gonna shift to the last segment of our evening, which is around superintendent search, which is a necessary thing. We have folks from Tasby here who will be running your search, but as we went through this community listening process, the board made the decision to ask questions of the community. While we're out there, let's ask them what attributes they want in an ideal superintendent going forward. And so, this is something I believe, actually, Tasby, we had done earlier, right? About a year or so ago, more or less? So, you're actually gonna get to see how these two things, kind of in the same way, you know, we talked about context, what the community said before, what they say now. And honestly, I think we can speak and say there's a lot of alignment there that y'all will get to sort through as you think about this. So, as a quick reminder, this is the exact same chart as before, because you asked the same people. You asked the 1,100 people who participated, and so, we've got the same percentages and breakdown there. The questions you asked were, what are the ideal attributes that you want in a superintendent? And then, if you had, after you listed all 12 of them, if you could only pick two, which two would you pick? And so, this paragraph, and I'm gonna have someone read it aloud for us, this was me, after reading all of this, putting it all together, what, if I had to say it in a paragraph, what would the ideal superintendent in Socorro ISD look like? So, Mr. Nahara, would you do a favor and read that for us?
Yes, sir. The ideal superintendent for Socorro ISD leads with integrity, humility, and honesty, earning trust through both character and action. With strong financial expertise and a deep understanding of the district's unique context, they ensure resources are used wisely to advance district goals. Deeply connected to the Socorro ISD community or its surrounding area, the candidate possesses an intimate understanding of the district's unique context, culture, and needs. They value teachers as the foundation of success, embrace accountability, and bring a proven track record of leadership in similar districts. Visible and approachable, they lead by example, make tough decisions when needed, and commit fully to the long-term success of Socorro ISD, not seeking other roles outside of the district.
So, all of this kind of came from where people responded. Again, small chart, but you have it in front of you, so you can actually look at it. We had a lot of things and a lot of agreement on some of these things, especially the two up there. So, let me find my page, because it is also small. So, when we looked at this, and we kind of bucketed all the responses again, the top five, first and foremost was integrity, as you might expect, followed closely by finances, followed by being local, community-focused, and student-focused. And then, there was a number of other elements like transparency, approachability, culture, bicultural, and a communicator going forward. And so, just as a quick note of kind of how some of these descriptions are, again, you know, people didn't say everything exactly in the same way. They said different things that made this bucket. So, integrity was around integrity, humility, and honesty in all aspects. Finances were about a strong financial expertise, a deep understanding of budgeting process, and ensuring strategic and efficient use of resources. Local referred to bringing knowledge of personal ties to Socorro ISD and/or the surrounding community with a clear understanding of its unique context. Community was that they actively listen to the community, encourage meaningful engagement, and seek to build input, to build strong community investment in our schools. And student focus was demonstrates a student-centered approach, actively creating those opportunities to engage with students and better understand and support them. So, with that, you also see at the bottom how this varied or didn't vary by context. So, you'll notice, parent, staff, community, student, and alumni all noted integrity. At the same time, while that's important to note, I would argue that I don't know of any board that hasn't tried to hire someone with integrity. So, that's helpful to know, and at the same time, it's not necessarily a differentiator. That's something you're gonna control for anyways. So, then, how do you think about these other elements around? Finances showed up. I thought it was unique in the fact that students had culture, and bicultural was a little bit higher than some of the other ones. Community was a consistent one. So, with this, I'll give you a few minutes to look over this and talk with your table partners, and we'll come back for a summary before I invite Tasby. I have to kind of talk through the last time this happened and some of the potential timeline that it'll look like. So, go ahead. Review what you saw here, talk with your partners.
And I don't know if it's finance.
I mean, there's clinical here.
Almost here.
And understanding the community.
That's true.
Folks that I've talked to that wanted local that didn't care about that.
I mean, I'm glad that it's there.
It is on, like, you have the talent here, so focus your search.
I start presenting.
It was me.
One of the texts are not.
I didn't want to pay.
Yeah, one of the, one of those people that I use.
She's been here.
That one obviously.
And I think that's.
Resonates for me.
Also.
Glad you mentioned that. I was just at the graduation this weekend, and my son was going to YouTube, and Wilson was a president.
He's a goat.
Not the goat, not the beast.
So, but yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but it's that.
So, I remind folks, right, like, I'm not from here.
That's a lesson that I was through.
But, and I think.
Huge.
I don't disagree.
I think it's just separating that subset of folks that don't want six figures.
Somebody else.
Rather spend.
From here.
But.
So, that's just, you know, for me, and not only that, but, you know, other stakeholders.
I agree.
Business executives are very important.
I agree, I disagree.
But, I think this last sentence, these last couple of words.
Not seeking other roles.
Now, I think people, maybe not.
People want beer for long haul.
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, I have a lot of questions in terms of.
Yeah, no.
That may look like.
Right? And then, and that's right.
Not three or two years, and say, I'm gonna retire.
Delivery of that?
Or should we do more of?
And I took a reading.
Explore to make sure that we're hitting that target.
What do they mean by that? Yes, Jim, no, Jim.
Without this quantifying.
So, how do you, how do you work demonstrating it?
And I think just on the idea.
Go ahead and take about 30 more seconds.
SISD.
I can't take.
So, highlighting.
Beliefs that have ones that I.
Yes. I guess is the appropriate answer.
That is correct.
But there is.
But I do believe.
The only difference is with the students.
Alumni.
Very.
But, I mean, I think that's what we have to believe, but we can't.
Synonymous.
I'm an alumni.
All right, let's bring it back together.
Very true.
First, are there any questions or clarifying questions? I read a word, and I didn't quite understand what it meant, or where does this fit? Any clarifying questions like that? No? All right. Then, what was surprising to you? What was confirming to you? What's rising to the top based on your conversations? What did y'all, what did y'all talk about? Go ahead.
What was surprising to me was the consistency across the categories. I mean, even if you extend the, that, or make the connection that local could also be culture, because what is important locally to us is culture. And if you're local, then you understand it, you know? So, if I make that stretch, although it's not a big one, and then you look across the categories, I mean, there's a lot, they're almost identical.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of consistency regardless of who you asked about what we hope for. What else? Thank you for that.
Well, I think we kind of talked about the same point, where I've had conversations where local and culture are almost synonymous, but people that exclusively preferred local didn't want to pay six figures to go outside of our region to find somebody to bring in. They recognize that we have the right talent, the right leadership, and the right people in our community already that we can look at, and those folks that are already here generally already have the culture. So, it was more of a cost savings mechanism for them from the local perspective.
Yeah, so, there might be some ways we could structure our search process to kind of adhere to this and be able to share, like, this is how we're gonna structure, we're gonna start local and then go out or whatnot. So, yeah, thank you for sharing that.
You know, one of the items that was very surprising to me, I came to the first community meeting, and I'm not sure, I didn't get a chance to go to the rest of them, but the one that was held here had pretty good turnout. And one of the things that I saw was that a lot of the folks that were here were parents that were involved, right? I didn't see individuals like in the neighborhood that I grew up in, like my parents, who would just kind of send me to school and hope for the best. And I think that that's, you know, something that I would have liked to see a little bit more, and of course, I know that, that's just, you know, folks who show up. But I think that, to me, it emphasizes the need of making sure that someone that is bilingual and that is able to communicate with folks, both in English and Spanish, I think that's something very important. Also, not a non-negotiable item as well, right? I mean, I think as long as the superintendent is willing to invest in translation services, that's a very important aspect to take into consideration, and I would like to see, you know, more engagement with those families and trying to conduct outreach, you know, maybe not necessarily, you know, because I think oftentimes, it's a matter of confidence, right? And maybe they're a little bit too nervous to be here, or they don't know that they can be here. But I think that that's just one aspect that was very surprising to me, and just making sure that we diversify the folks that are providing input.
Yeah, how do we make sure we're getting after folks? I think I see in community listener actively listens to the community, encourages meaningful engagement, and seeks input to build strong community investment in the schools. And we're talking about all of our schools and all of our communities. Thank you. Other thoughts? All right, just like everything, there's not a, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, just one last item. One of the things that I talked to Mr. Vasquez about was the last couple of words in that, in the superintendent profile that Mr. Nahara read out, not seeking other roles outside of the district. That's, you know, very important in making sure that we're selecting someone that's here for the long run.
Yeah, it's not as, they came up a lot. We don't want someone that's here and sees this as a stepping stone. We want someone that's here to be here. Kind of goes to your point, Mr. Nahara, around, it's also around local. Someone that's local is probably going to be here to be here rather than move in and move out. So can't read into that necessarily, but it seems like a potential to align those. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our friends from Tasby who will be working with you directly on your search. This is again, one piece of information for this. I'll let them introduce themselves and kind of walk through what they've learned previously and kind of give you all an overview of the direction that y'all can go. I don't need that. All right, thank you, sir.
Well, good evening, good evening. I'm George Kazanis and I am Division Director of Executive Search Services and Field Services for Tasby. This is Ruben Cervantes. Ruben is a field service representative for this region nineteen, also in eighteen and fifteen. So both of us are former educators. I've retired from public schools myself. I've had thirty-two years in public schools and public education. Twenty-four years of that of my career was as a superintendent. So I was in three different districts across Texas and enjoyed very much. I've been now with Tasby about two and a half years and about a year and a half have been, as I said, directing the executive searches. So what I'm handing out to you is Ruben has my card as well as some information about executive search because half of you are new. Half of you weren't on the board when Tasby was hired. We had provided background information about us. We had provided a presentation. There were others that the board interviewed and we were ultimately selected for the, for the role of your search consultant. So we then, of course, began the process with the board's input at the time and began the search. But all of you know, though, we, we did have a pause in the search. And the pause in the search was for the good work to occur that is evident today. All of your hard work is, is being portrayed in, in your listening sessions and the data you've collected and to inform you. And of course, the work of Mr. Kim and Dr. Hannah Hosa from T E A. And so we appreciate that. We were certainly in agreement to pause the search temporarily. And so we did that, but then we have begun the process again. So what I wanted to quickly share with you, particularly for the new board members is you might not understand what a search is all about and what, what it entails. And so we are, I would say forty to fifty percent of the way there. There is a lot more to come in terms of your commitment, your time, your efforts as board members in the search process. And so when we're, I don't want to go, again, go through your booklet here page by page by page. But I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken, there's certainly timelines on it, but on page twenty to twenty-one, there's a nice summary of the search events. And so one of the things that we had done, as I mentioned to you previously, was our initial presentation, our, a planning meeting. We had launched an online survey and closed the survey. I've got some data I'll share with you here in just a few minutes. Mr. Cervantes will help me again and pass those out. But your online survey with us was about sixteen hundred participants, very similar in terms of the numbers of community members versus staff members, things of that nature, pretty similar questions. And so we'll talk about that. The other thing I did admit with five of the seven or of the board members individually, and that was a very productive process and a learning process for me as your consultant. So I enjoy doing that. We provided that report and of course, as I said, we crafted your application, had it open and we're, we're accepting applications. And then of course, we paused. And so tonight I have a couple of objectives. And the objectives of tonight are to look at a timeline as well, to look at your calendars and your commitments to dates so that we can, as Mr. Mackey was talking about, I saw looking at June and July, things of that nature. So that all of these events are coinciding together so that you do have a new superintendent. And looking at your school calendars, I went back for the goal of having the ability of the district to introduce this person when your students and, not your students, but when your staff returns on July the twenty-eighth. And so that is your, of course, a year round school calendar, but in looking at your twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, that was critical to have that opportunity for the new person to be introduced to your staff and then the very following week, of course, to the students as they arrive in school. So if you're, if you're looking on page twenty-one, just again, the, the process, one of the things where we will finalize tonight is in the middle there, that application deadline. Would like to do that with you. I'd like to finalize then dates to review the applications with you as well and begin the setup for our initial interviews and possible second round of interviews. And then naming of your lone finalist and eventually the awarding of a contract. One of the things in Texas is that superintendent process is a confidential process up until the board names their lone finalist. State law then requires a twenty-one day waiting period before an official contract is awarded to the, to the candidate. So as I said, in looking at that, those constraints, if you will, guardrails from your discussion earlier today, we're, we're able to do that. We're able to look at before July twenty-eighth. So Mr. Cervantes, if you come, come up next, I'd like to share then real quickly just some of the, excuse me, summary of the leadership report that we had, we call it leadership report that we had prepared for the leaders of the district, the board of trustees. So there's, those are going to go around the, the table here for just a few minutes. Previous board members received the, the full report. We included the full report with all comments, but like, like Mr. Mackey, we like to do the same and find common themes throughout. And that's what we have done here in looking at the, your particular report. Similar to, to your previous listening sessions, we had thirty-one percent or so of the faculty and staff and support staff. So you really had forty-four percent at that particular juncture respond from your, from your own staff as well as about an identical number from the community. Significant strengths, I think, again, I don't want to be repetitive, but as, as Mr. Mackey was talking to you about, it's pretty similar overall themes is that people, your staff as well as your community still feel academic achievement is strong. You're a strong district. You're a strong district, not only in this region of the El Paso region, but you're a strong academic district across the state. And so I think you're, again, that came out loud and clear. Also loud and clear was innovative programs that you offer your students. The vast array of programming that you have was certainly noted as well. Again, a lot of kudos to your teachers and staff being loyal, passionate educators qualities, high quality, strong community engagement and involvement. And again, as I mentioned, so much availability of dual credit, of course, your early college CTE, lots of comments about facilities and how excellent they are. Technology readiness, safe environment, opportunities for growth in your extracurricular activities and really kudos about the communication channels. But on the flip side, if you look down, some themes that did come, of course, number one was finances. A year ago, yes, we were involved with that. We saw that as your consultants saw your board meetings, saw the issues that you are, were facing, budget deficit, mismanagement, according, again, from the survey of the funds. Lack of transparency and accountability at that particular juncture, remember this is about a year ago. It's maybe getting better, but you saw that today as, as Mr. Mackey was talking about rebuilding that trust in the community is vital. Again, division among the board at that particular juncture. Teachers said, of course, a, a lot of kudos to your quality teachers and staff, but again, they noted, I think also was noted, could use more support though, inadequate support. Some classrooms are crowded, behavior issues, discipline came up again. I think I saw that in, in the other survey as well. Again, impact on pay, again, the health insurance, Mr. Vasquez brought that in, that from the administrative side came out loud and clear. But also finally, better communication. They knew that channels existed, but there was hope for better communication and engagement. I think as you had mentioned as well, Mr. Rodriguez from the community. So desired characteristics, transparency, accountability, again, there's that word integrity, loud and clear, came out from our survey as well. Communication, empathy, understanding of students and staff, of course, fiscal management, budget management, collaborator, being able to work with various stakeholders. Again, preference, local was, was clear to us as well and a commitment to the long-term success. So not a lot of difference. One of the things too, I'll just add this from the board, that I think I did see nuances of this when I had our discussions with board members. Just a general comment was just again, someone that's can disagree without being disagreeable. So that's tact in your next superintendent, being able to have tact and candor to build that trust with, with the board and the community. Being decisive, being able to make decision and just stick to it. And in terms of my conversations with the board at the time. So again, that's a quick, quick overview, quick summary, but I think, Mr. Mackey, you see lots of similarities in the two and I was glad we were able to do that. One of the things too, that I'll point out now about our process, now that your application, the system is again, opened again. We verified that with the candidates that had previously applied and told them it's open, having the opportunity to update any documents, any resumes or cover letters, whatever they needed to do. So we were able to do that. But they also under, I hope that the, to the new board members understand this is that we house these applications. It's independent of the district. They were, they were with us.
When was it opened?
It opened last, I have to pull last, my last timeline, but it's, it was open over a year ago. After we were hired and then, as I said, we paused it. But we, yes, we have reopened it. Yes, we, it has been reopened so that we could lead up to tonight and possibly look at a timeline to begin interviewing candidates as well.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Kazanis, but I think he was specifically asking when was it reopened?
Reopened. I have to find out the exact date. Well over a month ago, we reopened it.
Mr. Kazanis, on another note. And I'm not sure whether this is for your or, or Mr. Vasquez. You mentioned during your presentation that the board was given the full detail behind the summary. We do have three newly seated board members. So is there a way that we could deliver that information to them? They would like the opportunity to review it, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Yes. And so with the applications being housed with us, one of the things I talked to the, again, the previous board about was a fact though, at one point, when the application period closes, then you will receive information how to access that portal. And that access will be through password, but after that, then at the time, the board wanted full access, which I certainly agree with just for you as board members, they have the opportunity to review each candidate as well. You're able to review resumes, you're able to review cover letters, you're able to review any supporting documentation. You're also, we have a video component in our application system. And so in that video component, they're answering three different questions and responding to those. So you can put a, an, a face to a name as well as see how they respond to the prompt and, and kind of get an idea, a window into who they are. But one of the other things I wanted to mention to you as well, if you'll look in the booklet, I'm trying to find the exact page, but it's characteristics of the superintendent. And I can tell you in a minute here. It's on page twenty-four. One of the things in our research of doing well over eight hundred searches since Tasby began doing searches in nineteen eighty-eight was going through in, in these community meetings, these community surveys, looking at what stands out as very, very important for superintendent skills to have for success in a school district. So one of the things that also in the application is, is that your candidates and applicants will be responding to those six different prompts. And so again, I just wanted to bring those to your attention, but they do match very carefully, I mean, very closely to all of the, the data, data from the surveys and the information that we have talked about tonight. Like number one, their communicator. Number two, successful record, record of leading and monitoring curriculum for academic success. Number three, collaborating with the board, building that climate of candor. Here's trust, cooperation, financial manager, number four there, visionary leader, innovation in, in today's classrooms. And then finally, an effective problem solver. And again, I hit those really high in respect of your time. But again, all the candidates will be responding to those as well too. So you have that information. Of course, your consultants are, have been going through applications as they come in. I certainly have my thoughts and ideas of, of candidates I would recommend to you. But our process is an open process where I want to hear from you as well as board members, what candidates after your review stood out to you too? So that we kind of see where we go from there, see what match we have so that we can select different candidates for, for the interview. Now, the, the final piece of the document, then I guess you're all waiting to, to see is a timeline. So Mr. Cervantes or Mr. Mackey? Where do we go from here? Before I start. Make sure you see that in front of you. So here we are, we're on Monday, May the nineteenth. And again, as I mentioned to you previously, backing this up from when your staff return on July the twenty-eighth, I was looking very carefully then about the deadline. And again, this is your search. These dates are suggestions and so I need to hear today from you what your calendar looks like, if at all possible, tentatively here, so that we can set these dates and publish these dates for our candidates. So they have an idea about the possibility if they were selected to, as a candidate for interview, that they would be available. But I set a deadline then, the final deadline for applications for Monday, June the second. Why, why June the second? Many districts, the vast majority of districts across Texas will be finishing school and graduations this weekend as Memorial Day weekend or next weekend. There'll be some outliers with their calendars, yes, definitely some outliers, but the, you know, the large majority of districts. And so this would allow the final push for us at Tasby for your search with candidates that gives the, the final push for those that are working. These are the type of people you certainly would want in your district that are dedicated to what they're doing now in their districts, but then may have the time then to, to focus on their application for your district. And so that would be then Monday, June the second. Gives you a week to review those. As I said, you'll get full instructions from my assistant, Joy Rivera from Tasby that will be emailed to you. But again, all it is, is, is a good computer and internet access and, and your golden from there to access this information. And so we will, I'll also provide you a rubric. In that rubric, we'll just help you look at and score different parts in your own mind to help you sort through the candidates based on the different information that you do review. But we'll look at, at a call meeting on Monday, June the ninth. I know Mr. Mackey was mentioning other meetings in June. This is a heavy June meeting because of the very next week is when we are suggesting that you have your initial interviews. The reason also the end of that, that June ninth week, I noticed that several of you are attending our summer leadership institute in San Antonio as board members, at least half or so of you are. And so I had your registrations and pulled those up, so I was trying to avoid that too. We currently suggest this can certainly be altered. This is our suggestion of six candidates to interview, two a night. As you can imagine, the interview process is taxing on you. It also gives you an opportunity still to have your day. You certainly can change that though, I mean, meaning if you're able to, to come, some boards interview three at a time, three on a day. So that three days that are out here could be reduced to two. As you can see, I have dedicated ninety minutes. The first round of interviews is a ninety-minute timed interview. It's a, when I come on the review of applications on June the ninth, we'll also talk about your interview. We'll talk about what it looks like and what questions and we have a data bank of that and, and those questions I believe probably will very, very closely match what you've learned from your community and the goals and what Mr. Mackey has shared as well and where you're headed. But we want to be sure all candidates are treated fairly, so that is timed and scripted, if you will, where you're asking the same questions of every candidate during that first ninety minutes. And so after that, you will, you are not selecting your superintendent. We highly recommend that you have a second round of interviews. This is a very, very important decision and do not recommend that a decision be made that quickly after one round only of, of an interview. The second round of interview is much more, in, much more personable. It's less structured. I ask that you look at your notes and look at the, the responses. I ask that you take copious notes so that you can ask follow-up questions as well. We also suggest at this particular juncture that there be somewhat of a reception before, so maybe either six to six-thirty or six-thirty to seven, so that you have a chance to meet the candidate and his or her family as well, that, so you see who they are and, and have the opportunity just to mix and mingle and get to know them a little bit better before you go in, into the interview. It may be an opportunity to showcase your district, provide a tour if need be, things of that nature, just facilities, things of that. That's just some things that we've recommended and seen that have been successful in other searches that, that we have done.
George, if I may add right here. One of the things, because I, I do searches as well, and one of the things I have to remind the school board, this is not an interview. This is a recruitment and selection process. There are some people who are great at interviewing. There are some people who are great at interviewing, but you have to look at the body of their work. And so, and that's why I highly recommend that you follow Tasby's advice about two rounds. And you get to know a lot more about them through, and keep your options open as you go through there. So you, you need to bring at least multiple people back, two or three back. And because you as a board do not want to get hung out to dry if someone's going to drive up the negotiation price if you're too anxious to, to make a decision. So those are things that you need to consider. And George, when you finish, I also want to talk about my role in this after that.
Absolutely. So as Dr. Hannah Hossa said, that's why the follow-up interview to me is very, very critical. Is, just as he explained, this is an opportunity, as I said, for more informal follow-up questions, opportunity for the candidate as well, to ask questions of you. And trust me, the candidates will do their homework. The candidates will have, have had ample opportunity to do their homework, to understand your district, to understand where you've, where you've come from over the last year to 18 months. And so it would be opportunity to delve deeper a little bit into that and his or her thoughts and plans. And how, and it's an opportunity for you to envision this individual being your next superintendent. Because the other piece of advice as well is that it has to be a good fit. All candidates, for example, that you interview could do the job. But who is the right fit for you? Who do you see as the, as a board member that matches your community the best? That you see in the role as superintendent that not only you see yourselves working with, very well with, but also that would be working well with your staff and teachers as well as being seen, being seen in the community and being the person that is the spokesperson for your, for your, for your district. After that, as I said, as you can see, that would be three slots, three days are highlighted. Again, districts in the past, some have combined those if they're able, you know, because of the dates and your calendar's not able to do that. But again, we recommend those on three different nights. Then the first day there to name the lone finalist would be Monday, June the 30th. And so you count 21 days from there. And that's why I had put Tuesday, July the 22nd, as your vote, official vote to hire. After that, the start date is somewhat negotiable, but being July 22nd, I believe that you'll be able to have your candidate come as soon as possible to begin that transition, to begin those introductions, to begin listening and learning and meeting people and being coinciding, as I said, with, with your teachers back to school on July the 28th. And then your students the very next week. Questions about it? Yes, sir?
Just a couple. But the first one's for Mr. Nahara. So I also coach my son's baseball team. And so we have a couple of tournaments scheduled in June. If there is a conflict, is there potential for video teleconference? Because I would much rather still be present even if I can't vote, but at least be able to, to be involved if I cannot make it back in time. That would, that would be question one.
I believe so, yes, sir. And as Mr. Cazanas did mention, this is a draft because I know that, I mean, as it stands right now, we have a conflict on June 25th. We've got a board meeting. So we can't do interviews on the 25th. But he also mentioned that we could, you know, double up or something like that. So absolutely, I think if we could take this and there's any dates where you have an absolute conflict, any, buddy, then, and I know Ms. Macias has some commitments as well, then we can look at making some adjustments. But yes, virtual participation is.
And I don't have to dive into details, right? Because dates, times, whatever. But just as long as there's a general option that I can zoom in or whatever that, that protocol is, I'm excited for it. With the quick turn between really vote to name finalist, we assume there's no issues, vote to hire, and then report date. Historically speaking, if we were to hire somebody that is not local to the area, what concessions are the district, concessions may be the wrong term. What incentives or abilities can the district offer to help with finding a home, finding whatever, if we hire somebody that may have to relocate? And that is, that hurts them starting before the school date starts. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, absolutely. That's up to this board.
Okay.
And so if that specific situation arises, we can certainly address it at that time. And even, even, you know, the start date, I believe is, you know, again, just draft, not written stone. I do believe there is one requirement by law, which was, I was going to ask you, Mr. Cazanas, from the date we vote to name the finalist to the vote to hire, I believe there's a certain number of days that need to last.
It's 21 days.
So that's the only requirement by law.
Right. And then generally after that, transition begins. And so again, in the contract would be specifically the first day for the new superintendent. However, the transition could be that they, they take some personal days from their, their current district and or, and then you pay a daily rate while they're here working in the district while they transition. I think it's up to this board to decide on relocation package, but that's certainly customary and common. But we'll talk about a lot more of those type of details too in the, the meeting when we, when we review the applications. You have a full, another set of packet of information that we, that we provide to you. That kind of shows you a lot of the, the different types of salary and benefit options as well. There's a lot of decisions ahead. Lots of decisions ahead for you. However, again, I appreciate the board president when he's saying like, is there just complete dates? I know the board meeting date, thank you for catching that one, but other, like your own totally out vacations. We have had the request about Zooms or, or, or video conferencing. Yes, but it's a listening, you're listening to the responses. You're not voting per se, you're not, you know, that kind of thing. But it is very wise to do that, if, if at all possible, so that you're listening and understanding, for example, who you invite, who you invite back. I, it's difficult if you're in the second round to be listening in. This is really reserved for the first round. The second round, because as you can see, you're, you're meeting and you're really as a board, after that last candidate in that second round of interview, you're going to need to be deliberating and discussing. And that needs to, you know, needs to be the full board at that time.
Mr. Cazanas, for Thursday, June 19th, the time says 10. Is that just a relic of the previous?
Nope, no. That just means, for example, you're meeting Thursday and you're, you're finishing.
Oh, I see.
Your last interview with your sixth candidate. I'm waiting to hear from you.
I get you.
And that's where it could be a conference call, phone to me about how did it go? And, and who, who are you inviting back?
Understood.
Because I understand, I take care of it all.
Right.
We take care, we have our own scheduler for the times. We call candidates, we take care of that. We take care of candidates that don't make the second round. And then we take care, call candidates that don't, don't, you know, in the second round that you do not select. So we're, we're taking care of all of that detail for you throughout it. So that's why that's that phone call to me. So I, so I know who to call back. The only thing, you know, while we're talking about it, feedback is great. Candidates are always interested in feedback. So kind of be thinking about that too as well to help grow future leaders here in Texas. It would be very helpful to us. So I'm trying to think other major questions you might have.
Anybody else have questions?
What does the dates look like to you? Sorry?
So I'm a firm believer in community-driven decisions. One of the things that we all recently saw is the city of El Paso, as an organization, just went through major restructuring. You know, new mayor, new council members, a new city manager. One of the things that I deeply valued that the city of El Paso engaged in were having folks meet the finalists. And I think that that's a very important aspect for us to take into consideration. And I know that it's during the summer months. I know that scheduling and, you know, timing can be very difficult. But I think, you know, and making sure that that outreach is conducted to not only community members, but to SISD staff, like you, like you all mentioned earlier, sometimes the folks that are closely watching the decisions that we're making are staff members. And so I think having, you know, staff at least and, and, you know, for, for us as board trustee members, and I can speak for myself, to conduct outreach to our own network. Ultimately, SISD is one of our region's largest taxing entities, and it is the region's third largest employer. And so I think it's very important to integrate into this process that, that engagement between community and the, you know, potentially the next superintendent.
But I have to tell you, in Texas, it's not an open process. So that does not occur in our state.
Okay.
And so in other states it is. For example, you know, even states to our neighbors, north and south of us, I mean, east and west of us, have an open process where candidates are possibly interviewed or it's an open process that the board is interviewing candidates in a public meeting. But in Texas, it's a confidential process up until the naming of the lone finalist.
Okay.
And so the candidates that have applied already that you have, that's the, that's how, you know, their expectation as well. Because just remember, these candidates also have livelihoods and jobs that they're currently working as well. And it would also certainly change your pool of candidates too.
Let me build on that.
Yes, sir. Please.
So this law was passed, Texas has the best superintendents in the country because, because of the law that was passed when Mike Moses was the commissioner to allow this to occur. And, and, and that's, and I'm going to be a little facetious about this. But here's the prime example, I have to tell boards, because boards, they want the community involved. But the, this is your number one job, is to hire the superintendent. The community's not going to be held accountable, as you well know, as based upon what happened recently in this district. So it's like me telling my wife, Kitty, I'm going to go date this beautiful girl in Socorro. And if she loves me, I'm going to divorce you and I'm going to marry her. But if she doesn't like me, I want to come back and stay with you. I, I don't think that's going to work out. And so that would significantly diminish your pool of candidates. And, and so it's just a process that Texas holds pristine. In New Mexico and Florida and Louisiana, if you put your name on a piece of paper, you're a public candidate. And you look at all the superintendents in Florida, none of them have any experience. Because they, they put their whole lives in, at risk. And, and so the high quality people would not want to be candidates under that. And it's, it's a great point. It happens a lot. But then the boards realize, yes, this is our job. I think your trainer will say, look, I'm, you trust me by electing me to make this decision. And I know it's not an exact science. And so, but I, I wanted to add that. Also want to add a couple of other things is that my role in this, per the commissioner and the deputy commissioners, that I'm going to be involved in the process. I'm going to be here when you review your candidates. I'm not probably going to say anything unless I know something that you need to know. And so I'm going to let the process work, but I will give you feedback, especially to the chair and to the search firm about who the candidates are and their background. We also have a lot of experience here as a team about Texas and out-of-state people and what their background and experiences are. And we also have access to some tools about the student achievement of the potential candidates that you're going to be considering. We know about their finances. And so I think you have a competitive advantage because you chose to have us come in as the conservator. And so this goes with the package. And, and so we have access to a lot of tools to help you make your best decision. So I just wanted, I will probably say nothing unless I see you going down a path that is, is dangerous. And so I'll let you be in control of it, but I'm not bashful. I will speak up if I, if I see a problem. Thank you.
Mr. Nahara, Mr. Rodriguez's point, is there something between voting to name a finalist and somewhere after or before the hiring date, when that candidate is public? That we could do some type of community engagement with the community, the staff can still come out and meet whoever, whoever that finalist is or after we hire them?
It's possible, and it's something that we've, or I should, I should say it even more insistent. Yes, it's possible. We've done it before where the lone finalist is named and they do, you know, come and everyone's allowed the opportunity. I think in the past, it's been during a day and, you know, they'll be several meetings to meet different constituent groups. So yes, absolutely.
And, and I know it doesn't get entirely to Mr. Rodriguez's point, but I think still having that community involvement as soon as possible legally allowed, I think would definitely be beneficial for, for certain.
Absolutely. Agreed.
Right. Yes, and we, you know, of course, recommend the same. That, again, that's why, again, this particular timeline was drafted so that that week of July 28th, is you have excitement in your district, you have your staff back. It's the perfect opportunity to not, to introduce this candidate to all the, of course, the Socorro employees. But then all the back-to-school events are, are starting and with the kids and families. And be a great way for the community to meet, meet this individual as well. So I would think that would be certainly a, an expectation. And, and the timing couldn't be better to do that.
Yeah, so I have a question. About a decade ago, there was three finalists that came to Socorro. And community, myself was able to see them. They answered questions, they went out to schools. That is no longer a possibility or that's not part of the process?
The top three candidates?
It was a top three, I believe.
I don't, then I'm, I'm not, it's, Dr. Hannah Hossa said. I, I have not been part of any type of search that's done that before.
You have a great point. It's permissive. It's a, it's allowable. But I think.
I have to tell them.
You're the only, I mean, that's the only one that I know of in the last 10 years that had three public finalists. There may have been some other small districts, but that is certainly not the norm. And I don't know of any district of size that has had, but you, it is permissive. The law is permissive.
I would have to tell them.
Would that exclude any finalists from moving forward, do you believe? Any top candidates from moving forward?
That's hard to answer because that would be their decision. But they would, I feel like what's fair is they know that. When, and we would need to tell them that. Even, let's say, we're in the meeting and we, you all select the top six that you interview. They'd need to know that at that juncture, that, that there's the possibility in the second round. You're not selected superintendent, but your name will be public.
Mr. Cazanas, is there any way that you can just pose that question to them? And that if the desire was there for us to introduce the top three candidates once those folks have been named, whether they would continue? And we don't want to know, because I think that would be unfair, which ones say yes and which ones say no? But rather you give us just a summary that says, okay, of the 50 applicants that we had, you know, 30 of them would continue to participate knowing that. And then 20, you know, want to be excluded, just to give us a sense of.
Sure, we can ask the question at this juncture, right?
Yeah. Okay. I think that gets.
It's important.
Okay.
I'm going to play devil's advocate. I'm in the middle on this one, to be fair. Because I think it could diminish the candidate pool. I think that's a concern, right? If, if we truly want the best. Yeah, I think there's a touch of character and integrity that comes with that. But I think we have to hold our own in the interest of fairness as well. On the flip side, after what this district has just been through over the past couple of years, I don't know how much we can keep close hold in the interest of transparency and accountability. And so I think being able to toe that line very carefully is going to be prudent. Yes, I want the public involved as much as possible. But no, I do not want to prematurely jeopardize anybody's livelihood because we've been burned before and we do not want to get burned again. And so how do we find that line to make sure that the community is involved? The staff are involved and responsive? The community knows that we're moving forward with the best candidate without unintentionally, or in this case, because we're talking about it, intentionally excluding the best potential candidate. Does that kind of make sense?
It does. I'll go back to the comment again. I'm probably going on a, on a, on a limb here. I will be, I disagree, but I won't be disagreeable. I think it would jeopardize your pool, particularly looking at your timeline. If I'm talking to candidates that are sitting superintendents and I'm looking at July the 28th and they know that's public, that's also in their world, they're trying to get school started again. They're having their possible convocations. They're getting their staff motivated. I don't, I'm just telling you, as a former superintendent, I would be out because of the timeline, the timing particularly. It's just hard to explain until you're in the role of really that summer and what it's like to get going and to get staff and motivated and getting the ball going again with school. It would be very difficult.
I think that may be a messaging or a marketing perspective that we need to look at where this community, it, because it's fresh, right? We see it in the results. It's fresh. We just had an election. And whether or not the turnout was what we wanted it to be or not, it happened. Of the four seats, three are new city members. And so I think that opportunity for the community has spoken. And, and a lot of the folks that we've talked to have said the same thing. They want transparency. They want accountability. They want financial stability. We've been to the listening meetings. They want, they made it perfectly clear who they're looking for in a candidate. I think even asking the candidates, it made me uncomfortable when we brought that up. And so I'm going to go with my gut intuition. It's, I don't think I would side with that. But I think we need to let the public know that this is what you voted for. This is what you've told us. And now it's our charge to go execute. And I think we'd be as, as transparent as possible without jeopardizing the pool. But it's on, on us, either collectively or individually, to take that back to the community as much as we're legally allowed to let them know where we're at. But, I mean, they've given us our marching orders. We have a full team of eight for the first time in a year and a half, two years? And, and so I think, I think this is that first part of not building the trust, but rebuilding the trust with the community. And so I would prefer to leverage that opportunity, but get the community involved as soon as we can from that, from that point on.
Okay.
So just to be clear, I don't think that's something that we have to decide right here, right now. We can continue the discussions and, you know, come to an agreement on how we proceed. But certainly, I think I'm with, having been through that process, you know, personally, I think also Mr. Yeto, well, I know Mr. Yeto was there as well during that, where the three candidates came. I, I certainly remember the benefits to it. But I think I'm also with you, Mr. Woodcraft. I mean, I see the pros and cons to both sides. So I, I, you know, just maybe as we reflect on everything else, let's think about that and think about how we want to proceed.
There was a huge benefit back then, years ago, when they came and they spoke. Because they were, they were talking to every community, you know, the associations, the staff and, and the public. So I liked that, but I know it's changed. It happened with De La Torre, it happened with Espinoza, and then with Carmen, it changed. So I, I see both sides of it.
I think the dynamic, the dynamic of the interaction with the community provided some valuable insight.
And I know it's almost a hard ask, right? But it's, it's asking the public to hit the I believe button on what you told us to do.
Right.
There's eight of us on this board to do it. And I think that's our part of the first step of building that trust back with the community.
Understood.
Yeah. And as these discussions develop, I, I would be really interested in learning more about that experience that you had outlined when the three finalists were presented. And I think, you know, any data that may have been obtained from that, responses, I'm not sure if that was the case. But I think that that's something to certainly take into consideration and, and review as, as we make the decision. And also open to finding, you know, you know, compromising and seeing how it makes the most sense for us to move forward. Again, because I, I do take the position of not wanting to reduce the, the pool of viable candidates. But going again to the point of, you know, I mean, that's one of the things that I, I heard a lot, you know, the importance of transparency. And I just think that it would be disingenuous to, to not act on that.
I think one of the things that we also as members of our community have to remind our community members as well is if I'm currently employed, me, and I'm applying for a job, I don't want my new potential employer to contact until I have an offer in hand. If they're going to hire me, then, you know, typically out of respect, that's when the new employer also reaches out to potential references as well. So, you know, the same kind of reservation and maintenance of confidentiality that we would all expect if we were looking for a job, the same applies here. You know, it's a very high profile position and you know, it's, it's, it's not uncommon in any job search. So just, you know, I think a, a nice reminder of what we would expect in a job search ourselves as to the specific community member making the request. I'm sure they would expect the exact same thing and, and it's no different. Sir.
May I suggest for the sense of the process, because as you mentioned, Mr. Craft, the timeline is pretty tight. When would you need to have some direction from this board to, for you to have that discussion with the candidates? Is that the board's going to have a regular board meeting coming up this Wednesday? So, I mean, obviously you can't do this discussion outside of this purview, so you're going to have to do that together. So just wanted to kind of see a timeline to make sure that you get a clear direction on which way to go, whether to be inclusive of that process or a different variation of some suggestions of the marketing. Because right now, I don't think there's a decision right now
No.
about, about this. But when would you need some, some direction by ideally?
I would say ideally, if you can, if you're looking at the timeline, they certainly need to know that when we review the applications for June the 9th. So you, you need to know that as, as, as a board.
Yeah. So it's, it's too late to put it on the agenda for Wednesday.
Correct.
And it's definitely going to be too late to have it on the agenda in June. So we would have to have a special meeting to even take that vote.
Correct.
So once again, if you want to have this discussion, we're going to need to do that. Or the board is going to need to do that soon.
Right.
And consider that situation to have a conversation again.
Yeah. I don't know that I have that much conviction to move it any farther. I would, I would vote to not ask the, the potential candidates that question if they're open.
Right. Okay. Well, going forward, maybe we'll figure that out, knowing that you need to know that before June 9th.
Yes, sir. So the, so the June the 9th day works well for you, and then the 17th through the 19th work well? Those are really pretty critical. After that, there could be some flexibility.
With the virtual option, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That summer SEI camps, there's one in San Antonio, one in Fort Worth.
Right. And, yes.
Hypothetically speaking, if I were to completely blow those off to focus on this, when is the next opportunity to go to those?
Those are, those are yearly, annually. However, we do have the convention in September, but it's in Houston.
Because you have to go to one, right? At some point, like it's required. Right?
We highly suggest it.
Yeah.
Continuent at hours. But these don't, it would be a lot of time away because the Monday, the June 9th meeting date, the San Antonio SLI is at the end of that week, I believe it's the 12th, 13th, 14th.
There's a Fort Worth option.
And then the Fort, but that is this one.
That's true.
That's the interview date. I did those dates because you all had signed up for San Antonio.
There's an option in September for the regular convention just as well.
And that meets the same requirement?
Yes.
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 So you could skip the San Antonio, the Fort Worth, want to go to the September one?
Yeah. I, I'm looking at it from a prioritization perspective, right? And so I was elected to do this, not to go to Fort Worth. So how do I make that work?
This one's to be critical, in my opinion, but it's up to you to decide.
Right, right.
Oh, I don't disagree. And I work for Tasby. We put on the SLIs. They're great, but this is very critical.
But I do think just to be sure, it looks like Tasby needs by June the 9th
Correct.
a direction.
Yes, sir.
One way or the other.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? For me? No. Again, thanks so much for the opportunity. It's been a pleasure working with you. And again, congratulations to the newest board members. And I'll, as you can see from the, from the timeline here, that we'll be involved with you. And we'll see you again, hopefully again on June the 9th.
I have one last question, and I'm sorry if maybe I missed it earlier. You mentioned that in the development of all of this, that you had the opportunity to sit down with the, the board members. And will that be the same for the newly elected board members to kind of?
Not with this type of a timeline. I can't do that.
Right.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
No worries.
All right. If there are no other questions there, and I just want to call out, you know, I think this, at the heart of this is a team building. What I just witnessed right here is a great example of what this looks like. How to engage as a collective with different mindsets, different ideas, weighing different options, and have an authentic conversation? You all will make a decision one way or the other, and there are always trade-offs to every decision. There's some benefits to having community engagement. There's some drawbacks and vice versa. Y'all will make a decision. And what our hope is, as we continue to build this, whether it's about this search, whether it's about how we set our goals, whether it's about what the superintendent brings us in the budget, is that we have those same conversations in that way and still make a decision and move together. And that's the heart of this team building, that work that we're going to do. So we'll finish up. I'm just going to go around the room. And I would love a one word from each person about what you're leaving with on your mind from this three hour team building. And we will start then on Superintendent Vazquez and move around.
I'm excited.
Excited. Mr. Rodriguez?
Insightful.
Insightful.
Analytical.
Analytical.
Hopeful.
Hopeful.
Like I said, it's about time we have a full board now.
About time. Not one word, but.
Grateful.
Grateful. I like it.
Gravity.
Gravity?
You guys are horrible. I think I went through each one and you guys said it.
Even gravity?
Yes. Which is grateful. Or you mean gravity like, gravity, gravitational pull or?
Yeah, gravitational pull, but like the gravity of these decisions are going to drive our district, like it's, right? Like there's some.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm also excited.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for engaging. Dr. Nocci, anything else you want to add? Dr. Kim? Thank you all, President. I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Well, with there being no other questions? No? All right. Well, there being no further business before this board. We are adjourned. The time is 8:51 and the date is Monday, May 19th, 2025.